During this declared state of emergency, the meeting will be conducted in accordance with California Government Code 54953E, as authorized by the resolution of the City Council. Please contact the clerk at city.clerk@mountainview.gov to obtain a copy of the applicable resolution. All members of the EPC are participating in this meeting via video conference, but no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.legistar.com, on YouTube at mountainview.gov/youtube, and on Comcast at Channel 26. As noted in the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral comment during the public comment sections of a particular item by joining the Zoom webinar at the webinar ID of 853-0070-5240. Emails and voicemail messages received before 5:00 p.m. today were forwarded to the EPC. All votes will be taken by roll call vote, and I'll ask the EPC clerk to take the roll. Ms. Penner?
Okay. Commissioner Clark? Here. Commissioner Dempsey?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yeah.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Here.
Commissioner Nunes?
Here.
Vice Chair Yin?
Here.
And Chair Cranston?
Here.
So, the first, the next item on the agenda is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the EPC on matters that are not on the agenda. Speakers will be allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the commission from acting on any non-agenda item. Would any members of the public on the line like to provide comments on a non-agenda item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves. The star six, EPC clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. If you have anyone wishing to speak.
I'm seeing no hands. Nope. Doesn't look like anyone.
All right. Now, I'll figure out why I can't find my screens on Zoom here in a minute. So, the main item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for the Middlefield Park master plan. Chair Webb, do any commissioners wish to have any, make any disclosures regarding contact with the applicant or visits to the site? Commissioner Haymeyer?
I've seen both. I've met with the applicant virtually and visited the site.
Okay. Commissioner Dempsey?
Met with the applicant virtually and visited the site.
Thank you. Vice Chair Yin?
I did the very same as the other two commissioners.
And Gutierrez?
Yes, I just visited the site. I make a pause not to speak with anyone in general.
Commissioner Clark?
I visited the site and met with the applicant virtually.
Commissioner Nunes?
The applicants requested a meeting with me, and I accepted, and I've been there many times just by virtue of living in the city.
And I had a meeting with the applicant, and I visited the site as well. So, we will begin with a presentation by Lindsay Higgin, Assistant Community Development Director. Lindsay, you're on.
All right. I will go ahead and share my screen. All right. Good evening, Chair Cranston and Vice Chair Yin and commissioners. I'm here tonight to present to you the Middlefield Park master plan. I do want to note that I will be discussing various sort of major components of this project and key highlights, but I will not be talking about every single component of this project in this presentation. But of course, I'm happy to talk through anything further tonight with the EPC. In September 2020, the applicant, Google, in partnership with Lenleys, submitted an application for this Middlefield Park master plan to the city. The master plan is located in the East Wisman Precise Plan. It's approximately 40 acres in size across 14 existing parcels located on the eastern edge of the city. The map on your screen here shows the boundaries in yellow of the master plan. It's generally bounded by Ellis Street on the west side, Middlefield Road and Mott Avenue on the south, the city limit boundary on the east, and the city and county of San Francisco SFPUC property to the north. The site is located within a half mile of the VTA Middlefield Light Rail Station, which is shown here in orange. The site is also located in the Middlefield Ellis Wisman Superfund area as well as a contaminated ground room. And lastly, the site is in close proximity to the Moffett Airfield, so there are height and land use restrictions for which this master plan is consistent with those. This project's gone through a series of community meetings. There are public meetings with EPC and council study sessions early last year. There's been multiple meetings with the Development Review Committee on some of the design aspects of the master plan, as well as a series of community meetings to gather input. What's not shown on here are the numerous meetings that the applicant has held with various interested stakeholders, neighborhood groups, and other interested parties. In terms of the master plan itself, the applicant is proposing sort of a maximum development program that includes up to 1,900 high-density residential units, which are shown here in orange in seven locations labeled R on the graphic on your screen. They're proposing 2.4 acres of land dedication for affordable housing to the city. Approximately 1.3 million square feet of office and R and D is proposed, shown in blue in five locations labeled O on your screen. About 50,000 square feet of ground floor commercial that is labeled active use and shown in red on your screen in five of the residential locations, Ellis Park, as well as the P2 parking structure. And approximately 10 acres of parks and open space are proposed, with just under 7 acres of land proposed to be dedicated to the city for public parks. These are labeled Gateway Park on the south side, Bridge Open Space on the north side, and Mod Park in the center. In addition to those three public parks, the applicant is also proposing a 2.8 acre, readily owned, publicly accessible, called Popa's, open space labeled Ellis Park, shown adjacent to the VTA tracks. In addition to these, there are also two district parking structures labeled with a P and shown in gray on the screen, which are really proposed to serve the majority of parking for the office buildings. And otherwise, each office location is proposed to have some parking onsite, and every residential and mixed-use building is proposed to have parking onsite. In addition to these various licenses, there are six private service streets proposed to be constructed to provide access from the public streets to the associated buildings, in addition to pedestrian and bicycle connections and pathways throughout the project area. Finally, the applicant's proposing an optional design feature to incorporate a private district utility system that could include a central utility plant in the O1 location, which could serve the entire master plan area with water, wastewater, recycled water, thermal energy, and electricity. This optional feature is at the applicant's discretion to pursue. The master plan's located in the East Wisman Mixed Use and High Intensity Office, land use designation of the general plan shown here on the left. The master plan is consistent with these land use designations and the East Wisman Change Area of the general plan. Within the East Wisman Precise Plan, shown on the right-hand side here, the master plan spans three different character sub-areas: the high-intensity character area, the mixed-use, or sorry, medium-intensity character area, and the low-intensity employment character area. The master plan is consistent with the precise plan, with the exception of the two development standards that were discussed in the staff report related to the additional key corner and office building facade links, which are both included in the master plan to be considered and evaluated with future building permits and building designs. The applicant's proposing to implement the master plan in four development phases, which are ultimately at the discretion of the applicant to build, but the project must always maintain minimum compliance with the precise plan, the master plan, and ultimately city requirements. So, in some cases, as mentioned in the staff report, interim measures will be required to provide that minimum compliance at each phase. So, looking at the phasing of this project in a little bit more detail, Phase One includes the market rate residential units at R1 and R2, constructing a portion of the Ellis Popa open space adjacent to those two locations, dedicating the 2.4 acres of land for affordable housing at R4A and R6, dedicating the land for a half-acre Gateway Park, and then also implementing and constructing modifications to the VTA bus duckout that is along Middlefield Road today to accommodate a new mid-block crossing across Middlefield Road, as well as other sidewalk and roadway improvements on Middlefield Road. Phase Two proposes the office, to build the office locations at O1 and O2, to dedicate the 1.3-acre Bridge Open Space area, which is comprised of two different parcels on either side of the VTA tracks. The intended purpose of this land is to accommodate a future city design and constructed head-bike bridge, which is identified in the East Wisman Precise Plan. Additionally, the applicant would be responsible to install new traffic signals on Ellis to accommodate a new private service street between O1 and R2, as well as new mid-block crossings on Ellis. And lastly, new sidewalk and bike lane improvements along Ellis Street as well. For Phase Three, the applicant is proposing to construct the market rate residential units at R3, R4B, and R5, as well as dedicate over 5 acres of land for Mod Park, construct new mid-block crossings, or sorry, a new mid-block crossing on Logue Avenue, connecting the Bridge Open Space to Mod Park. Additionally, today, there's a cul-de-sac on Logue Avenue. That cul-de-sac needs to be reconstructed and shifted all the way to the northernmost part of the project site, and so that reconstruction would be part of this phase. Additionally, new sidewalks and bike lane improvements on Mod and Logue Avenue. One thing I do want to point out is that the precise plan envisions removing street parking along one side of the street for Logue Avenue, Mod Avenue, and Clyde Avenue in order to accommodate a buffered on-street bike lanes on both sides. So, this project would be implementing that street configuration on all three street frontages along the project. For Phase Four, this is the last phase, office locations O3, O4, O5 would be constructed, as well as the district parking structures P1 and P2, as well as two new mid-block crossings to provide direct access to those parking structures and sidewalk and bike lane improvements on Clyde Avenue. So, why is Google Lenleys submitting a master plan within this precise plan area? The list on your screen here are really all the reasons that are required in the precise plan for a master plan. I won't be going over all of them, but I do want to highlight a couple of them. Number one, for any development in the north, or sorry, neighborhood park master plan area, which is shown in pink on the graphic, this area for any development to occur requires a master plan in order to accommodate and plan for a future public park, and the applicant has done that in this case. Number two, for Street C, which is also shown on here, Street C is the public street that the East Wisman Precise Plan identified. It gave the option for a developer to, instead of providing Street C, if it's not needed for access or utilities, that they could alternatively provide multimodal access through the area. And so, Google is requesting not to install Street C and instead has proposed and provided multimodal access. And lastly, item number three on here related to the location of parks. The Linear Park identified in the precise plan, which is shown here as that bold green line along the northern part of the master plan area. In investigating that area further, the city and applicant determined that shifting that space south to actually increase the size of Mod Park and the Bridge Open Space was a more appropriate design configuration for that open space, mostly because there's extensive underground utilities in that location that it's currently shown at, which would not allow for many improvements. And so, that modification has been included in the master plan. So, ultimately, the master plan does satisfy all these requirements per the precise plan. So, getting into the residential development, the applicant is proposing to construct up to 1,520 market rate units. They're pursuing rental units initially, but they are proposing and providing the flexibility by incorporating condo maps to potentially have ownership units as well in the future. As part of this development proposal, they are proposing just under 400,000 square feet of bonus residential FAR, which requires them to contribute approximately $2.1 million of community benefits and also requires other green building measures. The table you see on the screen here is the number of units estimated at each residential location, which is about 38% of the residential units planned for the mixed-use character area of the precise plan. And this translates to about 4,000 residents that could be housed here. In addition to the residential market rate housing, the city has a below-market rate housing requirement, which includes a 15% inclusionary affordable units to be provided within the market rate development. Additionally, the city has the non-residential housing impact fee based on commercial development, and those fees, of course, go towards funding affordable housing. So, this project's affordable housing obligations include paying the housing impact fee for the commercial component of the development proposed at about 19.3 million. In lieu of providing inclusionary units, the applicant's pursuing a BMR alternative mitigation based on the city's BMR regulations, which is an option that they can pursue. So, ultimately, the city requires an alternative mitigation to exceed the inclusionary requirement and advance other city housing goals and objectives around affordable housing, and it's at the discretion of the council to approve it. The applicant's BMR alternative mitigation proposal includes dedicating 2.4 acres of land on two parcels, R4A and R6, shown here in black, delivering those parcels as part of the Phase One building permits. And this would put at least one of the sites, R4A, about four years earlier than what would be required. So, with this alternative mitigation, the city hired a consultant team, Strategic Economics, Insightful Consulting, to help us evaluate the proposal. We worked on identifying quantitative and qualitative criteria to evaluate this, confirm compliance with the land dedication requirements, look at the development potential of these sites, as well as the funding needs to deliver the units, and really tried to base this on local Mountain View trends, as well as based on outreach to affordable housing developers. So, some of the key results from the evaluation are shown here on your screen. Some of the main points I want to make is that there is sufficient land to accommodate more than 15% affordable units, which is a key component of compliance, and that this approach does require significant external funding and local city funding likely that wouldn't exist with an inclusionary requirement. So, overall, the evaluation concluded that the proposal does comply with the alternative mitigation requirements and does offer a proposal that is greater than the onsite inclusionary units. In addition to the residential components of the project, the applicant is building about 50% of that new office area. This means they're requesting about 630,000 square feet from the precise plan development reserve for the new office. The master plan includes about 622,000 square feet of bonus non-residential FAR, which requires community benefit contribution of about 16.9 million. As part of the bonus FAR, the project's required to be LEED Platinum and incorporate other sustainability requirements. And lastly, the project's required to comply with the Job Housing Linkage Program, which really is intended to coordinate office and residential development as a strategy to ensure office doesn't outpace housing development in the area. And this project is compliant with that Jobs Housing Linkage Program. In terms of active uses on the site, the project's required to provide a minimum of 5,000 square feet at Ellis Middlefield per the precise plan, intended to accommodate neighborhood commercial uses. And so, this 50,000 square feet proposed by the applicant includes that 5,000. The active uses are really neighborhood commercial uses as defined in the precise plan, things like retail services, restaurants, and civic and community spaces. And a good portion of this area is proposed to be participating in the applicant's community benefit program geared towards small businesses. So, getting into the community benefits, Google Lenleys is required to provide 19.1 million of community benefits. In lieu of paying the community benefiting fee, they are proposing to fulfill the obligation in few ways. One is a cash payment within 90 days of approval of half a million dollars, and these are being referred to as people-centric funds. They're intended to serve programs and needs at the discretion of council related to the items you see listed here in this red box on your screen. Additionally, they are proposing a small business diversification and nonprofit inclusion program, or a small business program, which they're valuing at 18.6 million. This program is made up of a couple different components, including constructing 21,000 square feet of subsidized ground floor commercial space in R1 and R2, providing capped rents for those spaces, as well as a tenant improvement allowance to build out the space. They're also proposing to construct a 1,000-square-foot community pavilion building in Ellis Park Popa that will have minimal rents and available to the community for its use. And then, they're also providing about a $3 million support fund to assist small businesses participating in this program with additional funding needs and services to support their growth and development in the area. And this program is really targeted to serving businesses owned by women and people from underserved backgrounds, a grocer, nonprofits, and businesses with 50% or more of employees who are women and people from underserved backgrounds. Since a good portion of this community benefit proposal is based on subsidized constructed space, the city had Strategic Economics review the value assumptions that Google had as part of this program. And while strategic and economics and Google's numbers didn't perfectly match, it did show that with the cash payment, as well as considering all carrying costs that the developer will have for the subsidized space, including all impact fees required, the value of the entire community benefit proposal is more like 19.2 to 19.6 million. And that variation is really just based on any ground floor commercial that might be exempt from certain impact fees. And so, in the end, the community benefit program is compliant. Another thing just briefly worth mentioning is because it's, a lot of this program is concentrated in R1 and R2, which is part of Phase One, it does mean that the applicant is advanced, delivering much of the community benefits as part of Phase One. Moving on to public access, this graphic on your show, on your screen shows various forms and areas of public access on private property. The red arrow represents 24/7 multimodal public access through the project area for bikes and Peds, which aligns with the multi-use pathways and the private service streets throughout the project area. These are all required connections in the precise plan. I will note, there is only one that's an additional connection that is not in the precise plan, which is the pathway shown on the south side of P2. The purple area, which is sort of hard to see here, encompasses the entire Ellis Park Popa area along the VTA Light Rail tracks. And this is required to be publicly accessible for recreational use during city park hours as part of the requirement for obtaining a parkland credit. The yellow desk area represents the area within Ellis Popa that is proposed to have extended hours past city park hours to accommodate access to businesses along R1 and R2, as well as access to the VTA station. Aside from the three public parks and open spaces that are proposed to be dedicated to the city and would be designed and constructed by the city in accordance with our standard public park design process, Google's proposing this Ellis Park Popa open space. This space will be designed, constructed, and maintained by Google Lenleys. And in doing so, the applicant's requesting a parkland credit of up to 75% of this 2.8-acre area to count towards their parkland obligations. The applicant has provided a conceptual design shown here, which includes a series of recreational elements, things like playgrounds, sports court, and an educational demonstration garden. Ultimately, the final design of this space would come with subsequent permits submitted with the city, to the city that include detailed site and building designs. So, staff has reviewed the proposal and finds it is compliant with the city's requirements. Another component of this project is the 20-year development agreement the applicant has requested to build out their project beyond the standard two-year entitlement period. As part of the development agreement, the applicant has offered the following public benefits to the city and its residents, including offerings worth about $11 million, which was previously presented at the EPC and council study sessions, albeit they were slightly adjusted in the distribution of these three items, but they are the same. This includes a cash payment of $1 million for people-centric funds to be paid at the building permit of the first office building, to fund and install public art in Ellis Popa open space valued at $1 million, and a cash payment of $9 million to facilitate the design construction of Mod Park, Parks recreational amenities. In addition to these features, during the review of the project, city and applicant agreed upon additional public benefits, including funding and preparing a quarter-million-dollar study for the Bridge Open Space, sharing 40 parking spaces within the project for Mod Park visitors, allowing city use of the Ellis Plaza and community pavilion building within Ellis Park multiple times a year at no rent, and the applicant making good faith efforts to obtain a use tax permit, a point-of-sale permit at the project site to allow the city to get a larger portion of sales use tax generated from the construction of the project. Procedurally, an important thing to understand about the master plan is how it relates to future permits. The applicant is required to obtain permits from the city for each phase of development to actually construct development. Based on the feedback from the council study session in 2021, the master plan is proposed to utilize the streamlined review process outlined in the precise plan, which allows future permits consistent with the master plan to be approved at an administrative zoning public hearing in lieu of a city council public hearing. So, looking at the graphic on your screen, if the master plan is approved, the applicant would If the master plan is approved, the applicant would be required to submit, uh, a zoning permit for each development phase. That permit would go through the typical development review process with city staff reviewing for compliance. Uh, there would be a public community meeting, uh, the project would be reviewed by the development review committee. And finally, the zoning administrator would make a final decision on the permit at a public hearing. Um, the Z A does always have the ability to refer permit to city council when needed, which really would be in cases where there are inconsistencies or major modifications proposed. Um, as requested at the prior study session, staff defined minor and major modifications to the master plan. Um, to make it clear what the review structure and authority would be. Um, so minor modifications are really exceptions allowed in the precise plan or identified in the master plan or allowed by plan community permit. Um, these can all be reviewed by the zoning administrator in a public hearing. And major modifications are those that fundamentally change the project. So things like increasing the heights beyond what's been approved in the master plan. Um, locating the land dedications in different locations than what has been shown. Um, and so these would all require going back to council for approval and authorization. The last development component is related to the vesting tentative map that's being requested. Um, as shown on your screen, applicants proposing to create eighteen new parcels. Um, up to nineteen hundred residential condo units or lots. And a hundred and forty vertical subdivision lots for commercial use and the private, uh, district system. Uh, with this project, the city prepared a supplemental environmental impact report, which teared off the East Wisman Precise Plan E I R and the General Plan E I R. Um, a supplemental E I R is prepared when, um. To address one or more new significant effects not previously discussed in a prior E I R. For this project, that includes air quality. Uh, the precise plan E I R is a program level E I R that BAC MED has separate threshold standards for compared to a development project. So the precise plan E I R noted that future development projects would need to evaluate their air quality impacts based on BAC MED's project level thresholds. So the master plan has been analyzed at the project level BAC MED thresholds and result in impacts. Um, aside from air quality, uh, all other environmental impacts were adequately covered in the prior E I Rs. Um, from this project. Uh, the significant air quality impacts are directly tied to the scale of this project, the overlapping construction and operational periods over eight and a half years. Um, and the proximity of the approved yet to be constructed four hundred Log Avenue residential project. So with these significant unavoidable air quality impacts, um, in order to certify the E I R, the city does have to adopt statement of overriding considerations. Uh, which note the project benefits outweigh the environmental impacts identified, which was included in exhibit one to this, to the staff report. I do briefly want to describe a little more detail about the significant unavoidable air quality impacts. So air pollutants are regulated at the federal and state level. One of the main ones is the ozone. Um, which is really comprised of reactive organic gases or R O G. Uh, nitrogen oxides or NOx and ultraviolet light. Um, sources of R O G and NOx include emissions from project construction and operations. So things like construction equipment. Uh, mobile vehicles, generators, paint and consumer products all contribute to that. Um, BAC MED has project level thresholds for R O G and NOx. Um, and if a project exceeds those, it's considered an impact. Um, specifically, this project's operational emissions exceed BAC MED's thresholds for R O Gs. With the greatest emissions coming from architectural coatings and consumer products and mobile vehicle emissions. Um, a health risk assessment was conducted for outdoor air impacts at sensitive receptors within a thousand feet. And it concluded that four hundred Log Avenue could have impacted sensitive receptors. Um, finally, the project has mitigated to the greatest extent feasible to address these air quality impacts. But the impacts cannot be addressed to a less than significant level, um, hence why it's a significant unavoidable impact. In terms of next steps, an administrative zoning public hearing is scheduled for October twenty-sixth. Um, to review and provide recommendation to council on the development agreement. Uh, the city council public hearing is scheduled for November fifteenth to review all of the recommendations and consider a final decision. Um, and just lastly, as a plug for anyone interested in receiving ongoing email notification of this project, please, uh, visit our city website. And sign up for those email alerts. Um, this concludes staff's presentation. Um, staff does recommend that the E P C recommend the city council adopt resolution certifying the E I R. Recommend, uh, adopting and approving, um, the master plan. As well as, uh, the vesting tentative map and the parkland dedication credit being requested by the applicant. Um, staff does have tonight representatives from the housing division as well as the public works department. As well as representatives from all of our consultant teams, um, available for questions as well. Um, on that note, the applicant does have a presentation and Jeff Hosea and Martin Wiggins from Google Len lease will be presenting.
Thank you. We, uh, bring them forward.
Thank you. Hold on one second while I find my screen here. All right, uh, make sure everybody can see that because I can't see any faces now, so.
I can see it.
All right, thank you. Uh, thanks for having us, Chair Cranston, commissioners and staff. My name is Jeff Hosea and I'm Google's Urban Planning Lead for Mountain View. We're really happy to present our Middlefield Park Master Plan tonight. Uh, staff obviously has done a great job outlining several key topics. Um, so I will try to keep this as short as I can and not duplicate too much. Uh, I would, I do want to be sure to thank Lindsay in particular, but all of the staff of the city for all the work over the last many years. Uh, to actually bring this project to where we are today. Um, it's been, it's been a joy to actually work with staff, so. Um, I'm joined tonight by Martin Wiggins from Len lease and a, and a host of others, but, uh, Martin in particular, I hope you can jump in and introduce yourself here.
Yep. Hi, uh, my name is Martin Wiggins and I'm the Senior Development Manager for Len lease, working on Middlefield Park. As Google's master plan advisor and residential development partner, Len lease has been so grateful to work with staff and the community over these last two years. To develop this plan for new housing and parks in proximity to transit and jobs. So we're just honored to be here with you tonight and will be available to answer any questions.
Perfect. Thanks, Marty. Uh, so the, the city approved the East Wisman Precise Plan back in two thousand nineteen. Which sets out the vision to transform the area by adding housing near jobs, transit, parks and local serving businesses. Our Middlefield Park proposal goes beyond compliance with the precise plan, expanding on its guiding principles and then delivering a comprehensive community benefits package. Um, building on that precise plan, our goal for Middlefield Park is to be a sustainable, welcoming and vibrant neighborhood. Uh, focused on health than well-being. And the, and one that really shifts from being car centric to people centric, meaning we want to prioritize walking, biking, public transit and community health. Today, over half the site, yes?
I hate to interrupt you. I, I'm still seeing the first slide and I have a feeling you're meaning to, you've clicked through. Could just be me, but I wanted to. Make sure everyone's seen your current slide.
I did. I am on the site plan.
Okay.
Okay, let me stop and try to reshare. Apologies for that. Okay, let's see if it keeps up. So, uh, it really shifting from car centric to people centric. And I think I, you know, described that a little bit about really prioritizing walking and biking. Um, today, over half the site is surface parking lots. Uh, so we're proposing to convert almost forty percent of the site to parks and open space, another twenty-five percent to much-needed housing. Uh, plus new retail and community spaces. Everything is designed to be within a ten minute walk centered around, uh, B T A's Middlefield Light Rail, Light Rail Station. And then we are also additionally targeting platinum certification under the lead for neighborhood development. That includes housing of up to nineteen hundred new homes, twenty percent of those are portable, as Lindsay said. Uh, open space that's over twelve acres and then rebuilt a new office space totaling about one point three million square feet. Uh, phasing begins with all residential on four different parcels. Two market rate buildings at the corner of Ellis and Middlefield and then two affordable residential parcels that would be dedicated to the city in the first phase. And phase one also includes the building of Ellis Plaza, which is two and a half acres of parkland that will, that will be delivered upfront early. Phase two is focused on rebuilding the office square feet that's been demolished in order to build phase one. We then follow up with the remainder of the residential in phase three. And then the new office occurs in, in the last, last in phase four. Since we submitted our master plan to the city back in September of two thousand twenty, uh, we hosted two large format public community meetings. As well as met with a number of local and regional organizations, uh, some of which are listed here. Uh, we also conducted a community survey and hosted a community open house onsite in August. Over a hundred and forty community members attended to learn about the project and enjoy some fun, family-friendly activities and food. We've received a ton of great feedback incorporated as, as much as we possibly could into the project. Um, and then actually received questions that made us think and, and go further too. So the, the feedback has been amazing to make the project better. As I mentioned earlier, the project is front-loading housing, delivering up to eight hundred and fifty of the nineteen hundred homes in the first phase. Twenty percent of all the homes in the master plan area will be affordable through the project's land dedication strategy. As the staff report states, and I think Lindsay said the same thing, the alternative mitigation proposal provides a greater benefit than providing onsite units. In part by allowing the city to deliver ninety-five more affordable homes than requested by code, required by code. Additionally, the strategy will allow the city to serve lower income renters across a deeper range of affordability from sixty percent A M I and below. Further, the city will be able to, to decide on the size and mix of these units. On-site services could also be made available to residents who would otherwise have to travel off-site for such services. And the city will continue to own the land in perpetuity, allowing the city to best serve the needs of the community over the long term. At a high level, this is our Parks and Open Space Network. This is one of the cornerstones of the master plan. This has been refined based on input from both planning and park staff, so we want to thank them for all the time they put into helping develop this open space network. As mentioned in the phasing plan, we're not just giving the city land for them to build parks on, we are actually delivering almost two acres of Ellis Park in phase one. At no cost to the city. Bringing a vibrant new plaza and park online in the, in the very first phase will support new, small and local businesses. Encourage transit use and give us a head start on expanding the tree canopy growth. We've gotten a lot of excellent input from the community on what they'd like to see in the park and we're really appreciative of that guidance. And it's helped us create a park concept that will better support the community around us. Uh, with the tree canopy coverage, we plan to double and nearly triple the tree canopy on our land by the time the plan is built out. With an additional seven acres of land where the city will build new parks, the tree, that tree canopy amount will be even greater. And as we get into architectural design, we'll be looking at opportunities for rooftop terraces or gardens that can add even more. This is all key to helping Middlefield Park become a resilient and sustainable community where people want to gather and live. Google's also in the process of planting nearly fourteen thousand trees right now in Gilroy at our tree farm. Uh, they consist of about twenty-six native species and right now are at a size of about fifteen gallon equivalent or larger. Uh, so as a reminder, you know, what we're all, we're planting these directly into the ground in grow bags. Which should yield larger trees contributing to bigger canopies and thicker trunks compared to typical box trees as well. Lindsay did a great job of outlining the community benefits, but you know, our overall pa- package here is totaling thirty million dollars. Far exceeding the city's requirements with the majority invested in the first phase, including our small business diversification program. We're further supporting these new businesses by building out the Ellis Park in the first phase as well. And bringing in more than a thousand residents in that same first phase. Most of the nineteen million dollars is required for bonus F A R office. But as the staff report showed, most of that new office isn't delivered until the last phase of the development. So this is a significant upfront investment in the community. So we greatly appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with the city and the community to deliver on the vision of the East Wisman Precise Plan. Thank you to the commissioners for your consideration tonight. And like I said, uh, we look forward to answering any questions you may have, uh, either myself, Marty, or a, a number of others that are online. Listening, so appreciate the time.
Thank you. So the, uh, the next portion of the meeting is an opportunity for commission members to ask questions of staff applicant. So, uh, we will open up for E P C questions. Christopher Clark.
Um, I just have one based on the letter we received from the Coalition for Sustainable Planning, um, regarding the. The discrepancy between, I believe, the consultant's report on, on looking at how. Uh, many of the affordable housing units could fit, um, on that, on that side versus, um, I think the analysis that was. Uh, provided, um. Either by the applicant or, or through staff, the, the registered numbers and my, my assumption is that that really comes down to. How, um, you know, the, the, um, the layout of the units, the bedroom counts and those sorts of things and, and how those were analyzed. Is, is that the case or is there, there more to the discrepancy that we should, um, be worried about?
Um, Commissioner Clark, I'm assuming that, I'm not sure if that's a question for staff or the applicant, but. Um, are you referring to sort of the targets within the precise plan or are you specifically referring to the affordable housing?
It's specifically the affordable housing, so it's the twenty percent of, of, uh, uh, which would, I think, in, at least per the letter would be three hundred and eighty units. Um, but the, the cycle strategic economics analysis concluding that only three hundred and thirty-eight could be delivered on the, the two parcels of two point four acres. So I don't know, um, I'm, I'm just, my assumption is that. You know, with the land dedication, if the city wants to somehow get to three hundred and eighty, they, they probably can. It's just a matter of the, the unit mix and. And how it's laid out, but I just wanted to confirm that, that, that is a, we've determined that's a viable number at that site.
Yeah, so, um, the three hundred and eighty units or the twenty percent, uh, is really what the applicant sort of brought forward as part of the proposal. Um, and in terms of what cycle consulting, uh, laid out in their report, which was three hundred and thirty-eight units. Definitely based on a particular type of affordable housing, in this case, family housing. Um, and that was something that was decided, you know, for staff to look at. Because that was, that's a typical or a common type of affordable housing we see in Mountain View. Uh, it seemed appropriate for this area of the city. Um, but also it is a way, uh, as some can say, it's a conservative assumption of. How many units you could fit on a site for an affordable housing project because generally affordable housing often results in fewer units. Based on larger units, um, and more bedrooms and things like that. So, um, the difference there is really just based on sort of the assessment that was done. You know, to analyze this proposal. I think another key point, um, that, uh, I think you're sort of getting at is. Um, ultimately, you know, if this master plan is approved and the land is dedicated to the city. The city has the discretion and decision to decide what type of affordable housing can go there. And different types of affordable housing, um, can yield different unit counts. Um, and so, uh, the ability to potentially, you know, achieve three hundred and eighty, uh, I can't say, you know, that is a possibility. It just depends on ultimately what is proposed and decided upon, um, not only from council's direction. Uh, but also what an affordable housing developer brings forward.
Got it. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Christiane here, by.
Thank you, and I think I saw Renee on the call tonight, so maybe this is a question for either Lindsay or Renee. I wanted to better understand, and it sounds like despite the scale of this project, there is not an anticipated significant impact on the utility system. But I didn't quite follow the comment, and this is at the very end of the staff report on page thirty-one. About a large portion of the recycled water customer base to be removed in East Wisman. So can you walk me through that as a? There, there's some, the project would still be eligible for recycled water, but I don't quite understand what that meant.
Good evening, yes, I'm on the call, my name is Renee, I'm a senior civil engineer and, um, Rachel was promoting me to panelist. And Krishna was promoting me to panelist, so the last part I heard was you asking about the recycled water base?
Yeah, I just didn't understand the, the comment. So this area, the master plan area will still be supplied by recycled water using existing pipes? Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
Correct. The, the master, the recycled water master plan that was approved by council just a few months ago still shows that we are going to eventually get out to the East Wisman area with the recycled water system.
Great. Thank you. And I don't know if it's just me, but unfortunately Lindsay and Renee, the audio is cutting in and out a little bit. And so it's sometimes a little hard to hear, but thank you. I got my answer.
And I don't, so I may, I'm gonna throw one in here. I asked a question about this of Len Lees during my meeting with him. And Martin had some specific discussion about the impact if they did the onsite. It might actually be helpful to you, for you to hear that. It was, did I ask that question of if you did onsite utilities versus that? So Martin, could you elaborate on how that onsite would, could impact the use of recycled water, reclaimed water from the city?
Yes, I, thank you Chair Cranston. I will do my best. And just for city staff, we also have a district system specialist from Google, Drew Wenzel. And so he's standing by if we want to dive any deeper. If I'm recalling our discussion, Chair Cranston, I think what I probably would have said was there's an, within the district system, there are three different systems. There's thermal, there's microgrid, and there's a recycled water system which collects wastewater from the buildings and creates recycled water to you to pipe back to the buildings within the master plan. And so if we proceed with that option and we're producing our own recycled water, then the, we would not in that case be using the recycled water that is coming through the city's expanded infrastructure. Is that helpful?
Yeah, thanks. Other questions? Vice Chair Yan?
Thanks. Actually, I was going to go back to the affordable housing question, which was related to what Commissioner Clark had asked. And I was just wondering, maybe this is for staff. If council will have enough information, so for instance, the unit count, Google has proposed one, and I understand these are estimates at this time, and the consultant has produced another. Has anyone asked the nonprofit that build the affordable housing what they think they could get out of it since they will most likely be building it and it would be their architecture firms designing it? That's one question. And also if there's an associated sort of estimated cost that would go with it. And there's a, a second part to this question, which is the, the unit distribution. I know the jobs housing linkage, and maybe my memory is off, was for every thousand square feet of office, there's about three units. But we know, as we're talking about, that a studio is very different from a three-bedroom for a family. So I, I don't recall the specific language for the jobs housing linkage. So maybe you can refresh me on that because maybe that'll help in determining sort of what, what the technical goal is of the jobs housing linkage and then we could kind of move from there in the discussion.
Sure. I think, Krishna, if you could promote Michaela Helen Tinker, she can, from our housing division, could help also respond to this. But Commissioner Yan, I think a couple of things, if I can remember all your questions. The first one, so the evaluation that was done by Cyphal Consulting actually was based on feedback that we got from the affordable housing developers. So a lot of that work is incorporating that feedback in terms of what could be done. I will say, it's not like we were talking specifically to them about, hey, here's a site, what would you do exactly on this site? Because we didn't really have all that information available fully at that time. But we did talk about sort of the growing trends of affordable housing and what they're, they're accomplishing in some of their current projects. The other part of your question, which I'm unfortunately blanking on here, second question, is whether or not there was sort of an evaluation of cost associated with it so that the city council could determine whether or not this is something that is feasible because, you know, it is, I've got to say that it is great that Google had listened and is providing these great potential benefits by delivering the land and doing it early. But, you know, and that would be a terrific win-win situation. However, you know, the ideal was inclusionary units and this is an alternative mitigation. So if we're doing an alternative, I wanted to make sure that in the win-win scenario that we actually as a city win. So that would be determined by cost and unit type and makeup and that, that's what I'm, I know we're at still the master plan stage, but it would be good to know that we can achieve feasibly the goal that city is trying to aim for. Yeah, and I think what you're hitting on is kind of the balancing act with a proposal like this where a lot of the work that Strategic and Cyphal Consulting did was really based on what we can sort of best know and assume now. And so that did include the funding needs component, where taking the three hundred and thirty-eight units and kind of laying out a potential sort of financial or fiscal aspect to it and what that funding need would be to actually deliver those units. So that was included in, in that exhibit. And the sort of intent with that was really, to your point, to try to bring forward what this actually means, if, if this is going to be considered by decision makers. And I think just the last point real quick before I hand it off to Michaela is the job housing linkage. So you have it correct. It's basically three residential units for every thousand square feet of net new office development. There's no particular specificity on the type of housing unit. It's just housing units in general. And so with that, Michaela, did you have anything to add as well?
No, you covered it very well, Lindsay. Happy to chime in on any other questions, though.
Okay, sorry, just a little additional question tagged on is, and maybe Michaela, you know this. You were saying that the market for affordable housing is really looking for what type of unit? Because I know at least for the market rate, Google, in the, sorry, the staff report had stated that, or was it the, sorry, there were so many exhibits. I don't remember where this came from. That for a market rate housing, market is showing that studio units are in demand. But I wanted to know what is in demand for affordable housing? Because honestly, I don't know why there's a difference, but just go ahead and tell me since you know the answer for the affordable portion.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So there's a couple of factors at play that helped us to determine what market, or what unit mix we would be looking at as likely for these sites. And of course, you know, because these are sites are dedicated to the city, ultimately, we will have the discretion of whatever unit mix we think is right for the city at that time. But the reason that we looked at a family mix, which typically means around a little over fifty percent twos and three, two and three bedrooms, is twofold. One is that many of the funding opportunities that exist right now prefer that unit mix. So there's more funding available for projects that have that. But more importantly, in the city right now, a very, very large percent of our affordable housing units are studios and one bedrooms. We don't have very many two bedrooms and three bedrooms and our demand is highest for twos and threes right now in the city because of that mismatch. So that's, we also know that this is a priority. This is something that's in our housing element. It's discussed with the city council in our recent study session to get more what we call large family units, which would be twos and threes.
Okay, so there is a high demand for it and partially due to the lack of it elsewhere.
And also partially, I should just say, because of the cost of having a larger family and trying to afford housing.
Ah, yes, okay. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Nunez. Mr. Nunez? Screen looks frozen. I don't know if we lost it. I'm gonna jump to Krishna Gutierrez and just, and just, if you can hear us, let us know. We, all we're seeing is a black screen and not seeing any response. Krishna Gutierrez.
Sure. So I have a quick question. So I appreciate the majority of the housing coming onboard for the city i- is the first step, which is great. And a lot of hard work went into making this happen through community input and Google's diligence, which is wonderful to see. My question's more of a light-hearted one in terms of the park allocation space. I, I noticed that there was an area that designated for either a certain type of field or a dog park. In, in the end, through this process, when do you foresee a decision like that coming down the pipe? Because I'm sure there's people interested to find out, you know, how that process works and if they could pitch into the voice in one or the other, when could they do that?
Yeah, so I'll just start off by saying, so right now at the master plan level, the design that, that you kind of see of that Ellis Park open space is conceptual. So really, it's kind of a maximum amount of elements you might see in it, so there is some room for things shifting. But in terms of when the details would be known is really when the R1 and R2 building designs come forward and are submitted as part of that phase one zoning permit. So that would be part of that first phase that you would see a lot of that stuff. I will note that a portion of the Ellis Popa open space is also in phase two for the office building that's along Ellis. So not all of it will come online at once, but the designs would be provided, you know, comprehensively for that space.
Okay, great. And then my second question is in terms of funding, what's, how's that going to be looked at by the city council and then by us in general? Are we looking to, and bear with me, as many of you know, I'm, I'm new to the EPC, so I'm gonna ask some basic questions sometimes, like right now. The probability of funding and getting that, that money to be able to make a difference with this type of construction? What are we looking for when, when searching for that? And, and how big are the coffers, if we have any, within the city in terms of current funding? What's the strategy like for that?
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'm, I'm assuming you're referring to the affordable housing?
Yep.
Okay. So I don't know if we want to bring back Michaela to help answer that question, but really the funding commitments from the city would officially be coming online once that land is dedicated and the city is pursuing development on those sites. However, I will note that with the recent discussions at council about the affordable housing strategy, we have a whole pipeline laid out and for best that we can do for a project that hasn't been approved, we have started to integrate and at least associate the idea that these land dedications could be coming online. And so potentially incorporating them into our pipeline should, should these master plans, both this one and North Bay Shore, be approved. So Michaela, I don't know if you have anything to add about sort of the availability of funding and commitments for that, for the affordable sites?
Sure, thank you. At our August thirtieth study session with the council, we laid out our estimated funding needs for the city's affordable housing pipeline over the next five years. And we did include these two land dedication sites and our guess of what our pipeline might look like. And we estimated how many funds we currently have in our coffers, as you said, how much we expect to get in future fees and then what the funding gaps that we expect may be. And we do expect a funding gap over our whole pipeline. We have a very ambitious pipeline in the city of Mountain View. But we also laid out in the study session a strategy for hoping to fill that funding gap so we can achieve the pipeline. And that includes several measures, including reviewing our commercial impact fees, making partnerships with public agencies to increase funding availability, making partnerships with private companies and philanthropic agencies to increase funding availability. And then the last piece is partnering with the regional BAFA on their housing funding measure that we hope will bring in significant funds for affordable housing. And there's some additional state funds that we are currently seeking that may or may not also add to that. So essentially, we anticipate a funding gap, but we also have strategies in place that we are currently pursuing to hopefully fill that funding gap.
Right, thank you.
Nunez, welcome back. You were next when, when we lost you.
Yep, technology glitch. If Commissioner Dempsey wants to go, I'd be happy to. Okay.
Go ahead. You were first, Alex.
All right. Don't know what happened there. So I'm glad I at least got to hear that last bit of what I think was Commissioner Gutierrez's question around some of the funding related to the affordable units. So I guess a, a few questions here with, and it's hard to know exactly where to start. But I'm gonna kind of take a stab here first. With regards, this is a question for staff. What is the typical, or I, just across all projects? Not just projects of this kind, but just like all projects that are coming through the community development department. Is there quantified or even, you know, if anyone on the call right now could take their best stab at what the average development agreement length is for projects that are coming through the pipeline in terms of years?
I don't know that we have a specific number, but I can say some of the recent development agreements that have been approved for single-phase development projects are typically seven years that have been approved. So this would be a longer DA.
And then in terms of those single-phase development agreements, how big do they get in terms of level of like units or development, like scale?
Again, I don't have all the data on that, but I can say that all of the DAs that I'm aware of in recent history are all associated with office development projects and not housing or residential development.
Okay, interesting. Okay, so I'll, I'll kind of ask a few other questions. So I guess this one is for Jeff. The applicant, Jeff, hi Jeff. In terms of that, I think that first slide, the phase one slide that you showed or that part of the process, I noticed that the parcels for the affordable land dedication were included as part of that phase one? Can, can, can you help clarify what it means with regards to the inclusion or like the, the reasoning or, you know, yeah, the, how, how this is included into that phase one, like?
Just, yeah. Absolutely. I, I can definitely take a shot at starting that and Martin can come in behind me for sure. So as you noted, the, the phase one in the lower left along Middlefield and Ellis, that's the market rate. Residential, there's two buildings there. And then the two affordable projects, parcels are, are over on Maud Avenue. You know, we chose those sites in particular because A, we, we can, we have the ability to make them shovel-ready just as soon as we possibly can, so that expedites the delivery of those, the dedication of those to the city. And, and so I think that's a, that's definitely a bonus to the city. You know, there, there's a number of other reasons. It's, it's well-integrated within the neighborhood. Even the surrounding parcels, as the precise plan continues to build out, will add more residential around these, so they, you know, they will be fully integrated within the, within the neighborhood for sure.
So by phase one, it really, it's sounding to me, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's sounding to me like phase one means that those two parcels along Maud and the highway, phase one includes the transfer, the land transfer. It's not, right, like, it's not up to that three eighty. It's, it means like as a phase one, we will have transferred by the completion of that phase one, we will have transferred those parcels to the city.
Yes, yeah, the, the legal transfer of the land. You're absolutely right.
Okay, cool. And then with regards to, I guess, our, our consultants, Cyphal, Stifel, I forget, Cyphal. I have a question if, if, if okay for them. I noticed as part of the attachment with regards to the analysis of the alternative mitigation, that the, the analysis was that the uh, the analysis was created based off of two thousand and twenty-one uh estimates or or standards for the the prevailing costs at that time around like, I guess, like whatever the inputs would be around like material, um, labor costs, land costs, et cetera. I just wanted to make sure I com- I was confirming that with the with our consultant?
Yes, that's true. Can you see? I I don't know why I'm not on the screen, but can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. That is correct.
Okay, cool. And then I'm, one thing I'm actually, because I I I heard Commissioner Yin um speak to or or ask questions relating to this affordable um uh kind of unit alternative mitigation. I think Commissioner Gutiérrez was asking about something similar. I had a computer glitch, sorry everyone, but I think he was asking about something similar. Um, and to be honest, my questioning was around that as well. And so I guess one of the things that I'm thinking through, because I noticed that um in that alternative mitigation report, the 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 figures were based off of two thousand and twenty-one numbers, you know, before. Um, you know, a lot of that like supply chain crisis stuff was really hitting the news. I'm sure it was going on before, but like really started to escalate in a way that was, you know, publicly conscious. Um, ongoing inflation, you know, like eight point seven percent, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I guess I'm, one thing I'm very curious about is um to what extent does your analysis conduct a risk assessment for whether or not um these units can actually be um, you know, delivered into physical reality? Um, or would not, I guess, the risk assessment would be, you know, to what extent um did you guys assess? Because I see a lot of word in there like potential, the potential value, the land transfer, et cetera, et cetera. But to what extent did you guys conduct a risk assessment of, you know, what could prevent those units from actually being developed into reality by an affordable housing developer in partnership with the city? Um, and what were the results of that risk assessment?
We didn't specifically do a risk assessment, um, I think in the way that you're framing it. However, we did look at a lot of the city's current projects and historical projects that the city's been doing that we've worked on over the years. And um, I would just say the following, that um the hope is, of course, we don't know what will happen with the supply chain, but the hope is that, you know, as interest rates increase, as the Fed, you know, makes some moves, that there will be some abating in construction cost increases. So there is that, there is that hope, that that will abate. Um, obviously, no guarantee, but there's that hope. Uh, secondly, alongside of this, there is a recognition on both the public sector side and the private sector side of just the need for more funding for affordable housing, as Michaela articulated earlier. So um, there are um, there is the other side of it, where funding is just really being recognized as being more and more pivotal. And but, you know, last, I would just say that, you know, it it it, we never know what it's gonna take to get these delivered, but the fact that this land is getting dedicated to the city as public land and that the city can do what it would like to do on it with respect to affordable housing, I think makes a significant difference in mitigating the risk, because the city is in control and can try to address whatever risks occur.
Hmm, hmm. So it it is, it's fair to say that the city is in control of what they would plan in partnership with an affordable housing developer, um, what they would plan to develop or construct on that site, right? But I'm, I I guess my question would be, would you agree that the city and affordable developers are in control of external factors that any developer, I believe, would say are extremely, that they're extremely sensitive to when it comes to the, you know, feasibility of a project or that could impact the feasibility of a project?
Absolutely, the developers are sensitive to whatever's going on at the time of development. Absolutely true. Um, but that's, that's, that's what developers have to deal with on a daily basis. So um, I think that it is really helpful for the city to have the ability to make some of the decisions that it would not normally be able to make by owning the property.
Hmm. So then, yeah, because what I'm trying to understand, and and I'm hoping you can help me understand this, is um, in what form does um the city being able to plan for what they would like to build on that land make up for the risk of any external factor risk that would prevent the city from actually executing on those plans?
I can uh jump in.
Yeah, yeah, do, do.
Um, I'm not sure we know the risk of the external factors to preventing development. Um, this is an issue we face for all of our developments in our pipeline. Um, I think the the benefit that you're getting at, you know, is it a mitigation that we have the land dedication? Is that, should there be some sort of factor that is out of our control, um, makes development infeasible? Like, you know, a spike in construction costs that was unanticipated or a pandemic, although we managed to get some great affordable housing online during the pandemic. Um, the difference in this case compared to if um we are working with affordable developer who own their own land is they may have to sell their land to, you know, make up the lost cost, um, because there's holding costs associated with the land. Whereas in this case, there wouldn't be that. The city owns it, and we could wait and ride out that risk or find a way to mitigate that risk and then develop. So um, I think we all are in- interested in having the units be developed as quickly as possible, and that's our housing division's current strategy is to pursue that. But should there be a risk like that, it wouldn't be a, an end game for those developments like it might be if the city was not the owner of the land.
Hmm, right. And I I appreciate that, Michaela. And I I guess like my hangup is, you know, I I, what I just heard you say was, should there be a risk like that? Um, and I'm concerned that there wasn't assessment, there was not an assessment of that possibility even, right? We can't assess for all the infinite number of risks, but what was the assessment done of the potential risks, right? Um, and so I guess, uh, Jeff, I'm I am gonna ask you, in terms of that twenty-year development agreement, um, what is the reasoning for seeking a two-decade uh development agreement? Like, what, what are, what is Land Lease and Google going to be able to do with those twenty years that they couldn't do in ten, for example, or fifteen, or any lesser arbitrary number of years?
Sure. Um, so I I can, again, I'll start, but there's a, there's a number of people that are probably more, more educated than I am on it as well. As as Lindsay said, um, you know, typical development agreements of seven years for a a single phase, like one building, one office project, um, it is pretty typical. So as we, you know, look to do four different phases, have to demo some parcels, build others, and then rebuild, and then continue on, there's a process to it. So um, you know, part of it comes down to housing absorption as well. We don't want to build residential and have any empty units sitting, so we need to make sure that the first phases are full before we move into the next phases. And then over twenty years, typically, there's seven to eight-year economic cycles, like one we're in right now. Um, and so, you know, this will allow us to either, you know, to to stretch past that, one of those next economic cycles and and be able to weather that storm both um with the city and and with this agreement. So, you know, with having the the new office built in the last phase, um, you know, it it helps us, you know, push that out a little bit longer. Of course, we hope we can do it sooner than that. Um, but this is a a pretty tight timeline to develop this much, you know, to develop forty acres, I want to say, so.
Last question, I'm sorry. Um, are you guys planning to use um union labor for the construction?
We we have a great partnership with a number of of the labor unions, and so, yes, uh, this is uh something that we would look to be, you know, using again on this project as well.
Awesome. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Dempsey. Thank you, Sheriff. So I have three questions, uh, one about parking and uh two about air quality. So the parking questions for staff, so Lindsay, um, if you want to fill this one. Um, on page twenty-six, the staff analysis, it says, uh, they talk about um parking. And so for this master plan, for active-use parking, which I understand is largely kind of around the park, right? The plan provides about, I think they said, about two spots per a thousand square feet. Does that sound about right? Am I getting my numbers right?
Um, for what was studied in um, the study that was prepared by the city, it was uh about three, four spaces per thousand for active use.
Four, okay, because I had, I, my understanding was is that the project did something like two, but the, when the city did the study, they found that it was normally about three point six eight. Am I remembering this wrong?
Uh, no, you're correct. The applicant um has proposed uh two spaces per thousand.
Okay, that, yeah, that's what I thought. So I want to ask about that, because I guess I want to know, tell me why you're not concerned about that. And I'll, let me, let me add two other things before you answer. The first is, as I understand it, we aren't going to have street parking for some of the frontage, for at least for half of the street, uh, for some of the areas around the park. And that was to make space for bike lanes, which I completely support. Um, I also noticed that the parking garage, which I think there is some shared parking, is phase four, but the park is being put in in phase three. So that's temporary, but that would prevent the the people using the park, which would be created, from using parking, which only comes in phase four. So all, if you put all that together, I just want to help me understand why you weren't worried about insufficient parking for people coming to use the uh, coming to use Mod.
Yeah, so it's a great question. I think a couple of things, um, just to be super clear. So no parking ratios have actually, are being proposed to be adopted with the master plan. Um, so the study and analysis that was done was really the city's way of analyzing what are potential parking ratios that might be appropriate um, to consider, and uh those would really be locked in at subsequent permits that they submit for each phase. Um, getting at your specific question, so a couple of things, um, uh, in terms of parking for the active-use spaces, those are supposed to be on the same site as um, those spaces are provided. So it would be onsite that they would have parking available. Um, for Mod Park, uh, in particular, this is true for any city park. Um, for, for over a five-acre park, the city is likely gonna have some onsite parking, like we do at Rainstorm Park um, or Questa Park. So some parking will be probably integrated into the design of that park. Um, there is also street parking, which is a common way for park users to park in and around the park area. Um, and then in terms of sort of what happens in the interim, uh, so while the district parking structures won't be built until phase four, um, the applicant is required to provide and plan for some kind of temporary parking situation, which will likely span multiple sites. Um, and so there is, you know, potential for an arrangement to be made potentially for parking related to that. But um in terms of sort of specifically Mod Park, I think we would be accommodating some parking onsite.
Okay, so you are not ultimately worried about the ability to to have enough parking for the people who will use it? I spend a lot of time on soccer fields on weekends, so this is something that I I live this question all the time. Um, but if you're not worried about it, or if you feel like it's, we're good enough now and that you can actually, you know, uh, solve for it with more precision later on when the individual projects come up, you feel comfortable with it, and I'm comfortable with it, we're cool.
Yeah, and just one thing to note real quick. It also really depends on what um recreational elements are actually part of Mod Park. So yeah, if it's a field, that generates certain parking, and if it's just sort of other recreational uses, so, good point.
Got it. Um, the next two questions are mostly for uh for the applicant. So Jeff, if you wanna, if you wanna uh take a crack at these, it shouldn't be too hard. Um, and if you want to throw up that phasing slide, actually, the uh, that, that, that was kind of important to me, it's an important question. Um, first one's super easy, and it's just, is Google and Land Lease, are you planning on keeping all the buildings operational, even if they're in later phases uh to be developed? I assume you're not gonna end leases and kick anybody out. Are these gonna be fully like people going to work and eating their lunch and doing their whole thing until you're getting ready to knock the building down?
Uh, Martin probably knows a little bit more particulars, but most of the, a lot of these, but, yeah, go ahead, Martin.
Yeah, well, actually, it's the, a little bit, Commissioner Dempsey, it's a great question. It's a little bit too early to say. Um, there is a contemplation to, there's certainly some demo that has to be done to prepare land to be dedicated to the city in phase one. So before we break ground on any construction, uh, we're dedicating almost three acres of land to the city for parks and affordable housing, and so we've got to clear the those sites in advance. We may see the need strategically to clear more sites just for construction staging and phasing, um, et cetera. So there could be other sites that that come down more quickly. Uh, and I think there will be other cases where it's safe, you know, likely, you can't say for sure, but likely, that some people would be still working in in the building and then sort of um waiting for their new building to be done and then moving over to that building. So I think it's probably a bit of a mixed bag, and I don't know that we know today exactly how it would play out, but probably a little bit of both.
Well, let me, here's the why I ask, and here's what my sensitivity is, and maybe you can just file this away. As we go through the process of planning to build a place that we really want to be activated, right? We want people hanging out there, having coffee and walking the dog and throwing a frisbee, um, and taking their kids to the soccer games, like I'll be doing. What I wouldn't want to see happen, and I've seen this, I've seen this occur with other uh office buildings, where the tenants leave and the office building sits dormant somehow for years. And what I wouldn't want to see happen is um for this to turn into a bit of a ghost town, because there's a bunch of spaces that are now just bereft of people. And and that ends up kind of leaving a weird vacuum, um, that's, that's not appealing. I think that that's actually sort of the opposite of activation, it's kind of unsettling. So anyway, I would just say that as our goal is to make this active and lively, um, you might cut against that by clearing out whole sections and leaving it vacant for two years. So that was my sensitivity. Thank you for listening. Um, last one, I want to talk about air quality, because I was real sensitive about this when we did five-five-five. And I want to ask about log, and I want to ask about R four A. So if I understand, four hundred log is that, is not actually in this master plan. It's, it's a building that's between the the twos. It's uh south, it's to the bottom and to the right. It's right there. Yeah, there you go. My understanding is that's the building that was flagged as having um sort of unremediable uh air quality problems during phase-two construction. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that is, is that a Land Lease building? Do y'all, um, does Google own that?
Uh, no, that is a separate developer that owns that property and is pursuing that project.
Okay, well, I hope you're having uh very friendly conversations with them about um all the dust that's gonna be coming their way. Um, so I'm a, I guess I'm, as long as you're gonna try to work that out with them, and it looks, if if I recall from the staff report, as long as everybody keeps their windows shut, it'll be fine, right?
Um, in terms of, uh, yeah, and in terms of uh current building code requires certain MERV air filters, uh, which, yeah, if they kept their windows closed and doors closed, um, that it would mitigate it down eighty percent. So it'd be below a significant impact, and it would be considered less than significant. But I do want to just mention, you know, the city nor the developer can really control what happens on that site. And so conservatively, that's why we've assumed a significant unavoidable impact, is because we can't dictate if those doors and windows stay open or closed.
Totally fair. The good news is, it's, that's a commercial building, as I understand it, or um, is a, is a commercial building going in? Is that the new one?
Um, so it's a commercial building today. It is proposed to be a residential building with residential units. Yep.
Okay. Um, well, that, you know, that, it always worries me a little bit when we're doing infill like this, um, because it's easy to forget the people that live there, uh, that have to live in a construction zone. Um, and, you know, I imagine there'll be conversations with folks about just, you know, keep your windows shut for the next two years. I sure hope they all have air conditioning. Um, but I guess all I would do is ask that you really, really treat the folks there as neighbors, whether, you know, especially if you don't own the building. Um, because you're asking a lot of them. You're asking a lot of them. Because for some folks, they'd rather leave the window open and save the money and not pay for air conditioning, right? But this is gonna be two years of air conditioning, and that's not insubstantial. So I just, I want to make sure we all flag that, that there is a cost being put on the people that live there, um, and they're not your tenants. So that same concept applies perhaps even more with R four A. So that's. That little chunk, the, the little chunk of one that sits in the middle of three. So. Uh, this actually is a question for staff. Does the E I R address? The air impacts for the folks that are gonna be living in R four A? When phase three is completed, because they are, they're gonna have a huge construction site on three sides of them with not much buffer. Was that addressed in the E I R?
Um, so a couple of things, one, um. Uh, it was identified in the A R that similarly placed residential development that occurs throughout the lifespan of this master plan are likely. Um, to have similar impacts as four hundred loge if they're sort of within similar distances. Uh, I will say, um, you know, part of this comes down to the timing of, of that R four A construction. Um, once they give us, you know, land, if this is approved, um, there is a lead time to do that. And since it's phase three, that's sort of surrounding that site, there is a chance that we could be under construction around similar timelines. Um, by the time everything sort of pans out. So um, it's hard to really pre-assume if there might be an impact there or not.
Okay, so you think it's actually quite possible then that construction could be concurrent?
Um, or within a close time span? I mean, that's a possibility.
Well, then, you know, uh, as long as it's covered in the A R and as long as the city is looking at this, I simply want to flag again what is a sensitivity for me, which is looking out. For the environmental health of folks that live in places when you're doing infill around them. Living in, living in R four A, um, if, if that's already done and folks are, are inhabiting it. Then having, if three pops up then after it, that could be, that could be a lot. That's, that could be a lot to ask of people, especially if they got, you know. They have asthma, if they have other conditions that really complicate that, you know, two years of, of, of diesel and, and paint fumes. Um, so I guess I would simply ask, please be very, very mindful as you're thinking about your mitigations. Um, just remember there's gonna be people living there and please treat them with the utmost kindness, um. That's it. I'll get off my soapbox. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Right, um, so I have a, I have a few, um. I guess a, a, I just want to make sure this is absolute, I, I think this is the answer that I read in this report, but Mr. Anderson, this is for you. Um, my read of the staff report and then Lindsay is that. The fact that this potential um, air quality issue. Is coming up is because it was not studied in this forum in the original East Wisman Precise Plan E I R. And the way I read it, it sounds like any sufficiently large master plan within East Wisman or any of our areas. Could in fact trigger this and it's not, the, the, this is not a Google's Lend Lease specific issue. You make the master plan large enough and we didn't include it in our E I R with a precise plan, this will get triggered. Is that fair?
Yes, I think, um, a couple of things, um. The scale of the project, the amount of phasing that occurs, those are key functions that could have happened within, you know, certain projects, you know, five 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 is an example. West Middlefield, where it can trigger this significant impact. So this is not sort of. Only a situation that would happen uh, with a forty acre master plan, but it can happen in other development projects. Um, I do want to note, just, just for clarity as well, the precise plan E I R really focused on. Meeting certain thresholds required for that type of policy document. And so the, when any development is proposed in East Wisman, um, they actually all have to do this air quality analysis. To make sure that they're consistent uh, with uh, what was either assumed in, in the precise plan E I R or um. You know, making sure they're below the thresholds that BAC MED has for these project level um, developments.
Right, so I guess my impression is if they submitted. If ten different individual projects submitted, none of those individual projects would have been likely to trigger this issue that comes up. Uh, it's only, it only comes visible because it's ten, we're looking at all ten projects all at the same time, essentially, ten different buildings.
Um, I guess that's one way to look at it, yeah, is the scale, kind of all of it happening um, as one project. Um, so yeah, that would be part of it.
All right. Um, some questions, is the CEPO person still available?
Yes. Um, did you, is it about air quality or?
No, this is a, we're, regarding the low market rate housing calculation, the alternative mitigation and the calculations. Are you available still?
Um, yeah, so, um, I guess what exactly is your question?
Yes, so the um, the analysis. Highlighted a specific issue of the number of units that are being proposed on the two sites. Just like you did, I did my own research and I reached out to a, a person I know that is a nonprofit, a, a low market rate housing developer and said, hey. They're talking about putting four hundred units in two spots. Do you agree this would be a problem? And what I heard was, yep. Um, the state has a certain amount of funding, the sweet spot has the report states on the, in the summary. Says the sweet spot's like ninety to a hundred units, um, whether this is three hundred and thirty eight or three eighty. What you basically have is four times that amount and that the. The, the state has a certain amount of money and so when they look at projects, they say, hey, we can't put all of our money in one basket. So what would be likely to happen is that this would end up having to go through four phases, four phases of funding requests. With the state of California in order to get enough money to pay for this many nonprofit units, okay, low market rate units. And it wasn't clear to me in Seifel's analysis that when they compared the, the, of the value of the two proposals. That the fact that we would have, that developers would have to go through four phases, even if it was two different developers and the two properties. That they would be unlikely to be able to get both of them approved by the state, the state at the exact same year. Means that it's, it's gonna take four years of design, uh, just, just, once the designs are ready to even be able to go and ask for the money. And that's a long time. And I know Michaela and, and, and team went off and looked at this, but that's, that's a long time and I didn't see that in analysis. And so my question is. Does the analysis that was done on the comparability of the alternative? Take that into account and therefore, and if it doesn't, that means there is additional cost that will be incurred because. That construction will be further added to the future. They're, they used a five percent inflation rate. And so I'm, I'm, I'm questioning. The direct comparison of the two as was presented in the report.
Sure, yep. So, um, Krishna, can you bring back uh, Libby Seifel and uh, Michaela?
Do you want to go first or do you want me to talk?
Why don't you go right ahead, Libby? I'll join in after.
Okay, um, so thank you for your question, um. We did, we did look at this. I'm sorry if it wasn't clear enough in the write-up. It was discussed in the developer stakeholder meetings. Um, it is something that we did discuss with staff. Um, this will be a multi-phase project. You're correct.
Okay, so you're, you're, the time, you did a time value calculation in order to make sure this is comparable? I didn't see any kind of interest rate. Um, the current present value evaluation done when I looked at the report. To be able to see the two.
You're, you're, you are correct. We did everything in constant dollars, so we're looking at, I mean, you know, that's the way. The analysis typically we would do is we're looking at um, what it would be like at the time of development, assuming all things are equal. So we're using. Twenty twenty one revenues, we're using twenty twenty one costs, but obviously, um. You know, if it, if it happens in the future, there will be increases on both sides.
Right, so you didn't assume that the city has to chase a bigger pile of money to do this in the future? Sounds like.
Um, I. That is, I think what you're saying is that. Our funding gap is looking at what the funding gap is as of twenty twenty one. Um, and you are correct that there may be higher funding needs in the future. Uh, depending on what the ratio is between development costs and revenues and what funding sources are available. But it, it, it's always um, a challenge with these projects to figure out exactly what it's going to be like in the future. So our best guess is to base it on what we know as of today or what we knew of as of last year when we did the analysis.
Um, Michaela, can you, I mean, I just. I'm, um. I'm worried that we've, we've under, undervalued the, um, and we've overvalued the, the, the gift of the land.
I don't have much else to add. Um, I think the one thing I guess I would add is, um, if other costs go up, so will land costs. So that's another factor that we'll have to just, we would have to factor in. Um, but typically, as Libby said, we analyze things in the current costs and then. When we're actually developing, we usually build in escalators, um, based on the construction timelines. Libby, can you chime in on the timeframe in terms of the phases? I think Chair Cranston had said, you know, this could take four years to raise the funds. I was under the impression, um, that given the tax credit timelines, it. Certainly, they could not apply necessarily in the same cycle, but that there are multiple cycles in a year. Can you chime in on that piece?
Yeah, there, um, there are multiple tax credit cycles. The state is trying to consolidate its state funding into. More, you know, like it's got a supernova right now, which is. At least initially targeted for once a year, but may end up being multiple. Multiple times a year, um, you know, we're, we're all waiting to see exactly how that will roll out, but the idea of the supernova is that. There will be more certainty for the development community as it applies for multiple funding sources from the state at the same time. Uh, so that, um, but in terms of timing for development, I mean, they're just like any project. The developer is going to have to go through a design process, um, work with the planning department, get approvals. Then will be, you know, once they are ready, um, through that process, uh. And they know exactly, you know, they know more about what their construction costs are gonna be, right? Because they have to have a certain level of design to get a pretty good idea of what their construction costs are going to be. They're then going to apply for funding. So that can take, you know, one or two years, just depending on what the timing is for the design and review and planning process.
Um. And I don't know whether, I don't know whether, this is a. Was it a Michaela question or a Lindsay question? Um, the. It's related to the, the centralized services, I can't remember the name, but, um, the com- the common electrical areas, the common, um. Water, but also common heat. Is there anything in the development, in, in the master plan, the agreement that would. That would potentially allow the, the, the B M R sites that are given to the city to be able to. Leverage the benefit of those centralized facilities to be able to. Um, also get some of the benefit of that centralization. Uh, it sounded like, from my meeting with, uh, with Martin and Jeff, that. It could produce, reduce energy costs by sharing power across the buildings, um, the centralized. Heating could reduce utility costs for those and it could be something that actually could be, is there anything in the development agreement that would preclude that? Is that, is it, once it's deeded, then we have no access to it? Or is that something that could be considered for incorporation into what we're looking at?
Yeah, so uh, you bring up a great, a great question. Um, so the way that the district system was analyzed. Um, in terms of sort of our utility analysis, we did not assume connection to the, who sites proposed to be dedicated, however. Um, you know, in Google's proposal, it did incorporate those sites and we do have language in the master plan materials that do speak to. The fact that the city could connect at a future date, you know, if, if that's desired, but some additional analysis would need to be done. Um, so it's not to say it's an option completely off the table, but, um, but yeah.
Yeah, so it sounds like the DA doesn't exclude it, but it's not specifically included.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Um, next question. Um, this is just, this is. Christian Gertier has responded saying how he knew this stuff is a new thing for me. How likely and, and uh, the Google and Lend Lease people seem to make, think it was no big deal. Um, maybe there's a public worse person. The idea of, I'm, I'm. The idea of V T A saying, carry bury, bury pipes and wires and things underneath our railroad tracks to be able to do this stuff. Um. Is that fairly common? I just, I just, uh. You know.
Yeah, so. Um, so there's two factors here. There's the uh, proposed private district utility system that I think you're pointing out. The central plant is proposed on the west side of the tracks and then most of the actual master plan area is on the east side. So. Um, Google, if they pursue that option, would be sort of jacking boring under the light rail tracks. Um, to install that infrastructure. Um, addition to that would be, you know, any future bridge the city builds would be going over the V T A tracks. Um, and so city staff, um, and including the public work staff. Have met actually with V T A and the California Public Utility Commission, who's actually the ultimate. Um, authority on that rail and, um. They have procedures in place and processes in place to get permits and approvals for both of those type of things. Um, obviously, they have specific requirements about sort of depths and distances away from their infrastructure. To ensure that there's no, um, impacts. Um, and that would be part of what would have to be demonstrated as part of that permitting process. Um, but uh, with those two improvements, as well as, I'll add on to that, the mid-block crossing and the bus stop modifications on Middlefield Road. Those all sort of require C P U C and V T A approval. And, um, in the conversations we've had with them, there has not been any indication that, that achieving approvals for those would be impossible. Or prohibited, um, it would just be ultimately abiding by their rules and regulations.
Um, next question, and it wasn't clear to me whether CEPO and Strategic Consulting are the same entity or not, but, um. The value of the, um. The community benefit that would help, um, you know, essentially, um, women underrepresented, um, organizations. Um, is that, would that be indexed over a period of time? Um, as Commissioner Nee has highlighted, we're in a big inflation period. Um, is that, that contribution, does that value of that increase over the period of the twenty years based on inflation or is it? Nineteen million in the States, nineteen million forever?
So, um, with, uh. Let me back up, um, so two parts. One is really the heart of that question. I will pass off to the applicant cuz I think it's really part. Of their fundamental program that they can explain how that, uh, works. But I will say, um, in terms of the valuations that were outlined in the report, all of that is in today's, you know, fee amounts and dollar amounts. Um, and those do escalate every year. And so, uh, with approval of the D A, those would continue to escalate every year. Um, in pace with our budget as well. Um, so Martin or Jeff, I'm not sure who wants to answer that, but.
I could try to add a little color. Thank you, uh, Lindsay, and thank you for the question, Chair Cranston. The, the program has a number of parts to it. It's really a suite of tools to try to bridge gaps in allowing those small. Small and local businesses, nonprofits, underrepresented groups, uh, to be able to participate in really in the heart of the community. So. A big portion of it is just building the space and so, uh, that's definitely probably not gonna remain in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two dollars. When we build the space, we will have to build it wherever inflation is at, wherever escalation, all those costs run. Uh, there's another portion of the program that is kind of a TBD fund that's set aside for, you know, we want to go in and tailor. The, the needs to each group that, that, um, comes and participates in the program and those needs will change. And in some cases, those needs will be. Paid out through monetary contributions to them. And so, and, uh, Lindsay, let me know if I'm saying anything that's inconsistent, but I think the idea with those. Components is that they're, they're pegged sort of to inflation or, or to an index. So if it's something that's delivered in kind, that's, it's constructed. Uh, then it. Uh, then it is sort of by definition set, set to what things cost at that time. And if it's a, if it's a monetary uh contribution to that participating group, then that's tracked with uh with an index. Is it, Lindsay, does that sound?
Yeah, I think um Commissioner Cranston, I think you might be getting at sort of the capped rent or sort of some of the other. Uh, funding amounts that were specifically called out, and if those escalate.
That's the next, yeah, that's the next question.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, um, I was, it was more the total value and how that's, okay. So, is the, is the, is the capped rent escalating as well?
It's capped at, at an index. It can grow no more than uh, I want to say it's a construction cost index.
Um, and then I guess this is a. Commissioner Nunez is asking why the, the DA is so long. My question was, what happened if it happens promptly? So if everything's built in eight years? Does that mean this program goes away in eight years and all the, all the benefits that, you know, where? Somebody might get for as long as ten, twenty years goes away after eight? How does that? What, how, when does it end? Okay, um, is it after twenty years? Is it regardless of when everything's finished? If Google and Len Lee finish everything and, you know, uh, twenty thirty, does everything go away then? Or is it continued to twenty forty-two? Holy crap.
Um, so the way, the way that the program um is outlined in the project conditions and in, and. Um, how it's being proposed is that it has to have a minimum lifespan of ten years from one, once the space is completed. So um, that's a minimum no matter what, and then if it is, the DA goes beyond the ten-year period. Then it has to be the full length of that DA term that the DA is active. Um, so no matter what, it would be a minimum of ten years.
And longer than that, because that's ten years from when a group moves into their storefront. And it's going to take us time after this, hopefully after this master plan is approved. Phase one zoning permit is approved, building permit is approved, building is built. All those things happen while the DA is in effect, and then someone moves in and then they get the tenant, the minimum ten years that Lindsay's talking about, so.
All right, I'll, I'll give somebody else a chance to ask questions. Christian Gutierrez.
Hang in there, Martin. Hang in there, man. Look, these are good questions. We're getting to the weeds and that's great sometimes and, and it's informative. Um, and so a couple of the questions I have too, though, uh, pertains to just um length of time. Looking at it from a different perspective from Chairman Cranston, um. The affordable housing aspect to it, you've got anywhere from three twenty to three eighty units. That doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to build immediately. I mean, we still have time to be able to go out and seek funding. Now, we're also entering, or some would argue that we're already in a recession. I dare say that within the next two to three years, I don't think that economic situation is going to be too peachy keen around here. So if we think about the long-term value of holding the asset of the land, and here's a question. Uh, I don't think there is a time limit for us to be able to set forth this construction uh project and, and, and move forward with it. We, we can afford to wait until we come out of this recession, so that it is at that point an opportune time for us to then. Um, propose the plans, get the construction going along with uh the monies that we'll need. And at that time, I would think that the cost of construction wouldn't be as high as it is now. And so if we look at it from that economic perspective, there's still an opportunity to gain some wealth from that. By being diligent enough and not to start something now when it could be problematic by the time you begin. So i- is, if, unless I'm mistaken, is there a time limitation for when we can submit our application for? Um, you know, the low income, the affordable housing aspect to it uh or not?
Um, Kresha, if you could bring back Michaela, I think um getting at your question. Uh, usually folks are not seeking funding until there's an actual proposal on the table, so. Um, it would really be uh necessary for us to either release uh an RFP or an RFU. To start that process and um as part of uh Michaela and the housing team's efforts. We're really trying to be diligent, diligent about how we plan to release that and timing of that. And trying to be as proactive as we can within the parameters that we have. Um, we have to be really careful about not sending out requests for proposals if we don't actually have the land. Delivered to us and know all the details of the land. So um, Michaela, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that. All right.
Okay, so, so then in essence, that's the advantage of being able to at least have the land now, once this is done. And then at the time when it's appropriate, based on my understanding of what you've said now, then the city can move forward with its plans to do X, Y, Z. And then we can look at it with more real numbers at that time. Knowing right now, yes, yes. So knowing that right now, if we were to rush into it, economically speaking, it may, it may be too expensive. But two or three to four years from now, it may not be.
Well, and I think also the lead time of all this stuff does take a couple of years, so um, things can change during that time span uh as well. Um, but yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Nunez.
Thank you, Chair Cranston. Um. This question is for um, I guess either uh Jeff or anyone from Len Lee's, whoever was there. I guess um, my question is. Um, oh, however many years ago, at whatever like group or team meeting it was. Um, where the idea to um, offer up the. Separate land dedication, uh, you know, for the affordable units to the city. As an alternative mitigation. Um, I guess like my question is, eh, you know, if, if I can, you know, kind of prompt it a little bit, it's like. Um, whoever it was who said something along the lines of, hey, guys, I have a great idea. Why don't we offer up the land uh to the city? They can develop all the affordable housing over there, and we can develop all the residential market rate and office and retail over here. That's a great idea because.
Well, do I fill in, I fill in the blank now?
Yes.
Yeah.
That because.
Sure, uh, thank you for the question, Commissioner Nunez. Uh, affordable land dedication is a, is a strategy that's mentioned in the precise plan. Uh, as a way to, to hit the twenty percent target. And it's also in the BMR ordinance, so we've always been trying to maximize the amount of affordable. Units and uh provide the most deeply affordable, give the city controllers, the, I think the advantages have been laid out. Uh, at this point, so it was a strategy that we read about in the, the precise plan. And as a way of trying to maximize the number of affordable units, uh, started to, to emerge in our minds is probably. The most fruitful strategy to maximize uh those units.
Cool, so then if, let's just say by the end of this whole process. The end result is that the project gets approved with the condition that. Uh, Google and Len Lee need to develop the fifteen percent affordable. Um, you know, with like dispersed amidst all of the. Uh, parcels of land, there is no land dedication because it sounds like that's only to the benefit of us. Um, if that's the end result, then you guys would be happy about that. Like, would that work for you guys?
I think if we're trying to maximize the amount of affordable units, I don't think that delivering. Uh, a lower percentage of inclusionary would, would be meeting the city's goals.
That wasn't my question.
Thinking a lot.
If we said theoretically under this scenario, hey, like if the city of Mountain View was personified and said, hey, like. I don't, I want less affordable units. I want you guys to build less affordable units, but. No land dedication, you build it inclusionary amidst all of the properties interspersed within. Then you guys would be like happy about that.
I'd be very surprised, I suppose, if that was this, that became the city's.
Right.
Direction.
My question, I'm asking, would that be a workable, good outcome for Len Lee's and Google?
Um. It's not something we've looked at in a long time, so I don't know if that I could give a sort of a clear answer at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Nunez. Can I jump in on that? Sorry, Chair Cranston, I, I, I might jump in on that. Just, just, I mean, I, I think it's a, in, in a hypothetical question. Um, you know, Google is committed to providing as much affordable housing as we can, and we have an affordable housing fund that does such a thing. And helps the creation of affordable housing, because we do recognize that there is a housing crisis in the area right now. Um, so I, I think we would rather. Produce as much housing as possible, so I don't think we would be just as good with that solution. In that hypothetical situation that, that was proposed there by Commissioner Nunez. But um, you know, we would have to go back and look at it in, in detail.
So in the staff report, Lindsay, and in that earlier study session, it was stated that inclusionary was, was not financially viable. Are you saying that that was, you've not reassessed that since the previous study session?
No, I, I recall those discussions at the um, at the session, and we did. We did look at it. I think we reconfirmed that it's not economically viable to get anywhere close. To the number of units that the land dedication strategy um provides. And given that the land dedication strategy was, uh, if I'm recalling correctly, broadly supported. By the EPC back in February twenty twenty-one. Um, confirming, you know, as we, as we did, that we were not going to come anywhere close to that with inclusionary. We've kind of haven't looked at it very much since then.
Uh, and Lindsay, council supported that as an option as well, correct? The twenty percent land dedication.
Yeah, so the direction that uh council provided was definitely to move forward and looking at it and studying it further. Um, and so here we are at this point, having studied it and come to a conclusion.
Okay, any other commissioner questions before we move to public, Commissioner Hume?
Just briefly, and maybe this is a question for staff, so. I think the housing piece in the first phase is included in the housing element um pipeline, so. If this is approved, those pipeline projects become act, like, that helps us gain compliance, is that right? But if, if for whatever reason, based on what Commissioner Clark had said earlier, like the different, the different layouts and configurations. It's possible that we could have a reduced number than what we're planning to tell the state for this coming housing element cycle, is that right?
Uh, correct, so it was assumed that the affordable housing sites and the phase one residential, the R1 and R2. Uh, would be um implemented during the time span of that housing cycle, so. Um, so yeah, that's what we've assumed in the draft housing element.
Thank you.
Nice turn in.
Thank you. Um, first, a couple of questions that are a little bit unrelated um to what we've already discussed. I'll, I'll say this first. Um, one is the active uses on the ground floor around the residential buildings um in, in the park. I, I, I think I reread in the precise plan that general office is allowed. As the ground floor use. I know that you guys had stated, you're really trying to get neighborhood. Uh, services in, and, and, and I believe that you're, you're going to work in good faith towards that, but. Since, you know, we're looking at a long time period, we don't know what may happen, and we understand that sometimes. General office is just easier to lease out. So if that's the case, does that count towards the jobs housing balance? And does it come out of the, the two million that has been approved? Um, I just, I'm wondering how that works with all the numbers that we've been looking at, including the um affordable housing. In that case, because it comes after the fact, so. It's just a question.
Yeah, so I think um the two million doll, uh, square foot um development reserve is all associated. Uh, specifically with the net new office development. It is not presumed or to include sort of the smaller offices that I think you're referring to that. Are allowed in neighborhood commercial areas. Um, but there is sort of a square footage limit to those spaces. Um, for those permitted office uses, uh, but it wouldn't uh be something that would be deducted from the development reserve. Um, I think part of what is important to remember is any space that's participating in this small business program. That they have as a community benefit has to fit very specific parameters. So any tenant that goes into those spaces would have to meet those qualifications, and really the way those are set up. And Martin or Jeff, he'll need to chime in, but I don't really think that most office users would really qualify for that small business um program.
They'd be a really small office, for starters. Uh, the only thing I can think of that. Might show up is if a nonprofit is looking for a small amount of office space and we, you know. That's the only thing I can think of, and hopefully in that case, it's a nonprofit that. Um, has some sort of operation that can spill out into the plaza, into the park a little bit, if it was a nonprofit. Bike repair, making that up. Uh, uh, and they had some office space and they also spilled out and. Did bike repair lessons um in the park. That might be an affinity, you know, sort of an affinity in terms of matching the tenant to the space. They participate in the program, uh, and then there, there could be some small amount of general office, but that's not generally. What the program's designed to do, and yeah, I agree with you, Lindsay, I don't think it would. You wouldn't really have anyone that would even fit the criteria, so.
So, for instance, there wouldn't be an R and D firm that, you know, was associated or just, you know, tied in well with what's already going there. Um, going in for office space. It is its own entity, but, you know. Also tech and has office and it comes in, it's just small. Um. It functions in theory and practice as office. That wouldn't qualify, you're saying, in the program.
I, I think R and D is a, Lindsay, is that a different land use?
I think I saw that.
R and D sounds like a land use that's subject to the development reserve, and so the master plan doesn't contemplate. That land use in, in active use. I, I could imagine a small maker space. Um, a, a small, some, but again, they would have to be, they would have to meet the criteria. Um, and so it, it, it sounds, it still seems very much like an outside, an outside chance. An R and D firm, I think, is, again, just sounds to me like a different land use that's not contemplated within the, the program.
Yeah, and I think one thing, um, Commissioner Yan is, um, really if it's an allowed land use. That's currently allowed in that area, then it is a use that could go into these ground floor commercial spaces. With the exception of those that qualify or are part of this program, which will be much more tailored, you know, to the specific parameters for that. So I think um, I think to your point, I, I can't definitively say that there won't be some kind of small or office use. That goes into a ground floor space at some point, if this development is built out, but. Um, it's really comes down to what the precise plan allows today.
Right, and I guess that's, that is the crux of my question, is that in the precise plan, it allows for R and D, it allows for general office. And I know, I just didn't know, is the fifty thousand square foot that is part of the program? Those parameters cover the entire fifty thousand square feet that has to be, so they have to meet parameters of the program in order to be considered active use. Within the fifty thousand square feet.
Um, so.
Anything in the precise plan can go into those active uses and it can be R and D general office.
Um, so yeah, I think anything that's in the precise plan, that's an allowable use, can be proposed. I think of the fifty thousand, um, Google's program is targeted at twenty-one thousand. Of those fifty thousand square feet is participating in that program, which may not qualify for a typical office use. Um, so there are other square footage where potentially that could happen. What I will say. Is that the master plan attempts to lay out sort of the intention of the land uses that are preferred. Um, by listing, uh, I think they have a table in there of active uses in the implementation chapter. Um, that are really geared towards more of these services and retail and entertainment type uses that I think. Um, Google and Len Lee's have kind of identified as their preferred um tenants.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sure it's prefer, I'm just wondering, so the program only covers twenty thousand. There's fifty thousand laid out in the master plan, so that's a potential thirty thousand that could be office that is not tied to the jobs housing link. Or any of the other requirements and numbers that we're looking at now.
Yeah, so it's twenty-one thousand square feet of their program, then there's five thousand square feet that the city requires in the precise plan to be neighborhood. Commercial uses, and then outside of that, what does that leave? Um.
Four thousand.
Yeah, twenty-four. Yeah, 24,000 that, in theory, yeah, could be using the precise plan.
Because I was just thinking, 24,000, if 1,000 square feet is three affordable units, that's 24 times three affordable units. It's like almost, I can't do math, 75, almost 75, I can only round up. Affordable units that we, you know, are not getting.
Yeah, with the way the program is set up, yeah.
I think that's something we should look at before it goes to council, something to discuss.
Other questions or?
Uh, let me, I'm sorry, I have my notes here, you know, very small question. I know there's 24/7 access to get to the bridge through Ellis Park. So that's fabulous, but then the park itself has limited hours. I'm assuming that's just like a regular park. You're not going to put gates around the pathways and limit access that way. It's just sort of, it's known that when it's a certain time, you're not supposed to be there.
Correct.
Okay, great.
I will say though, with a ped bike bridge, there might be a slightly different situation. Because again, we wouldn't gate off the bridge, so we would likely have some kind of lighting or something to allow night time use.
Okay, I was just wondering, through Ellis Park, it's not that the pathway is going to be gated off?
Correct.
Side parks, okay. Thank you. All right, yes, thanks. That's it for now, I'll leave the rest to discussion.
Okay, so we'll move into public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide a comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. The EPC clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. Can I get, can folks who are interested in speaking, do a quick, put your hand up so you have a feel for how many we're looking at here? Nine. So we can, can probably keep it at, right, keep it at three minutes about? Is it here? 9:20? All right, let's skip it to three minutes.
I'm promoting Jerry Santarpia, one second.
Yes, hello?
Yes, uh, one second.
I'm rep, and then we'll show it to Abby.
All right, Jerry, you can speak now.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jerry Santarpia. I am a representative of the North Cal Carpenters Union, and we come out in full support of this project. This project will give local hire. So people who usually got to travel two hours in one way will now be able to work where they live, which is actually great for the community because their tax base will stay there. It's great for their families because they'll have more time to stay at home with them. Also being that it's a union project, it'll have apprenticeship programs, which we all know is a major escalator for middle-class mobility. Also, it is documented that 90% of apprentices are people of color. So that will also help for equality and equity. So we come out in full support of this project and thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker Christian?
All right, I'm promoting Sean Reese to start. Should be able to speak now.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners, my name is Sean Reese. I'm a field representative with the North Cal Carpenters Union Local 405. We are in full support of the Middlefield Park Master Plan. This plan will create thousands of construction jobs for the community and will provide economic opportunity and tax revenue to the city, county, and school districts. It will help alleviate the housing crisis and give the community more housing opportunities by creating 19,000 units. I would like to point out and applaud the collaboration between Google and the City of Mountain View. In closing, the carpenters support this project for the benefits it will provide to the community. We appreciate your investment to the community and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm promoting Bruce England, one second Bruce.
I think I'm on, you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you all, thanks Commissioners. This has been a really very deep and detailed conversation on your part, even just in the questions phase. So I'm going to have to actually listen to it again to catch all the details on your subsequent discussion. I just want to highlight the letter that Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning wrote, and I'm speaking on behalf of the coalition. Cliff Chambers might be speaking later about some of the details in the letter, but we get into, as Commissioner Clark said, some of the details around the housing count. Affordable and inclusionary housing is very important. And also the cost sharing and how that's all going to work and when that part will be considered, whether it's during this phase with EPC and city council or at a later time. This is going to come up more in the design phase, but if there are any retail outlets that are going to be used for grocery or produce, they need to be big enough to have landing areas and storage areas. So if that needs to wait for the design phase, fine, but if it needs to be anticipated, maybe that should be thought through. On the trails and lighting, Commissioner Yan brought up a moment ago. The, the way that lighting is handled has to be done very carefully because it can't be so bright that it has impact on, on wildlife, but it also needs to be safe enough for pedestrians and bicyclists that will inevitably use the facilities. And lastly, NBCSP has long supported local hire and fair labor practices. So we'll just throw our support behind that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chambers, Bruce England, I'm with Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning. And we've had the opportunity, thanks to many sessions hosted by Google Lendleys to provide input, and we really appreciate that. We have expressed and now really continue to express strong support for the overall mixed-use development framework provided in the master plan. As, we did participate back in 2021 in the study sessions. And I, I really feel that staff and the applicant did an exemplary job of addressing many of the issues that were discussed at that time. We're particularly pleased with the outcome of the phasing plan. There's a lot of front-loading of the housing, community benefits, the, you know, the parks network, et cetera. And what you haven't really mentioned a great deal about is the small business diversification and nonprofit inclusion program, which we think feel is really a, a great community asset. And the other thing that really wasn't talked much about is the kind of some, some of the really good design features that have resulted from the design by the applicant. But, but also i- in terms of really having a really good urban design, it really fits together. And I think, you know, there's a lot of very good things about this overall project. Like you, we've had a lot of concerns about whether or not the actual delivery of the affordable housing units as part of the master plan will actually be realized. And you've had a lot of good discussion about that and I won't repeat that. But there are a couple of questions that really I do have after that is, there's a big difference whether the city has a contribution or not. If they don't have a contribution in 21, 20, 21 dollars, it's 63.7 to 80.6 million dollars of financing required compared to just 22.5 to 39.4, 4 million with the city contribution. And we really need to understand why. We really hope that we do have the full 380 units. And we'd really like to know if there's going to be a city contribution. We'd really like you to ask the city to make a commitment for the city contribution because it makes a huge difference in terms of the, the city financing. And I think, you know, in clo- in closing, we're very pleased with overall master plan. I think it's going to be a jewel for the city and we strongly support it. But if, if you're not able to realize the 380 units, there really should be a contingency plan for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker Christian?
Beth Fisher?
Hello, yes, this is Beth Fisher. I'm from the Santa Clara and San Benito Counties Building and Construction Trades Council, and we fully support this project. Not only is there the opportunity to open up thousands of construction jobs for the region's skilled union workforce with prevailing wages to support working families, but we also appreciate the affordable housing to really try to meet the housing crisis in Mountain View. In addition, the opportunities for small businesses, nonprofits, and of course, support services for residents, the new retail and so forth could support jobs and many other job opportunities at the site. So we really support this plan and we're excited to see this development.
Sharon Denoa?
Hi, yes, thank you council member, my name is Sharon Denoa, and I am a resident at Mountain View. And I just had a few questions. I appreciate the questions around current residents and the traffic as well as the pollution that it's going to cause. My concern is, I am concerned about the power load that this is going to offer. We typically have outages frequently and I'm concerned about it. Another concern I have is that it sounds to me that they have both office and housing. And although they have committed to using union labor, I'm also wanting to know if that's for the entirety of their project and if that, this labor is going to be local labor to, and the source of it is going to be local to ensure that there is no exploitation of labor on their project. I'm also concerned about whether it is modular construction or if this is going to be onsite construction based upon quality and the duration. As I know that modular has been something that's been popular, but that the quality is low quality. Those are pretty much my questions. Also, that I hope that the hours of construction can be limited to day hours so that it is not disturbing the residents further. Thank you for your time.
Ronnie Fisher?
Hello, my name is Ronnie Fisher, and I represent the Santa Clara Valley Autobahn Society. We appreciate your plans, especially the aggregation of open space areas, creating habitat corridors with native species, plants, green spaces with a significant-
You're breaking it up a little bit, right?
Light pollution to protect birds. We plan to follow the project as it is implemented, delivering a mixed-use project that truly weaves nature into the urban landscape. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker?
Kenneth Javier Rosales?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, great, thank you. Good evening Chair Cranston, Vice Chair Joyce, and Commissioners. My name is Kenneth Javier Rosales, and I'm the Planning Senior Associate with SV At Home, a nonprofit, nonprofit organization that advocates for affordable housing across Santa Clara County. We would like to thank staff and city council for their diligent work and leadership to bring the vision of the East Wisbona area into full fruition through the Middlefield Park Master Plan. As discussed in our letter submitted to you today, we are in strong support of staff and the Google Lend Lease Team's proposal for Middlefield Park. It lays out a plan to completely transform the current swath of suburban-style office parks and parking lots into a vibrant, well-connected neighborhood rich in places for people to, of all incomes to, income levels to enjoy, such as parks, shops, and transit. And we are most pleased that the Middlefield Park Master Plan enables 20% of new units to be 100% deed restricted affordable homes through land dedications, enabling the full 20% that will come to the city with valuable site improvements. Middlefield Park will play a significant role in the growth of Mountain View in the next decade as it feeds into the city's housing element, bringing obligations. We are confident that all parties, including the city council, are committed to actualizing the vision of Middlefield Park. And we are excited about its role in taking the next step to implementing the East Wisbona Precise Plan. Thank you so much, have a good night.
Next speaker?
Alex Brown?
Hey friends. Okay, but quick, yay for more housing, yay for trees. The land use looks good, but when it comes to design, Jeff, come on, you got this, make it weird. Give me something interesting to look at, give me something fun to go visit. Thanks.
Yeah? Any other speakers?
I'm seeing no other speaker.
All right, then we will bring it back to the commission for deliberation and action. Would like to go first. Mission great years.
Thank you. Hey, everyone moves around so much on the screens. Vice Chair Yan, I had a quick question for you. So you mentioned that you wanted to explore more of the potential of an additional, I don't know, 30-something or 40-something housing affordable units before we moved on? Did I understand you correctly in your last question or?
I had brought up the idea that in the precise plan, it allows for general office use to be on the ground floor, which in the master plan, it's proposed as active use. So if that is general office and, so Lend Lease and Google had said that within their program, that kind of thing is not encouraged. And I, I believe they are really trying to get neighborhood services in, but their program encompasses only 20,000 out of 50,000 of what is active use. So if what doesn't qualify in their program for the 20,000 can then go into the 30,000. I'm sure that's not their intention, but, you know, we know that sometimes over time, things can change and it's allowed then. And in that case, we are getting maybe, oh, I'm sorry, what was it? 24,000 square feet extra of office space that does not get accounted in our jobs housing linkage and all the other sort of numbers that we're looking at. But that's the one I was focusing on. So I didn't know if there was something that we could talk to Google and Lendleys about or the city could to figure out what happens in that case.
All right, so perfect. So, so having understood your point on that, I guess my question then is, with the current recommendations, would you want to amend to include this question that you have so that council can look at it? Or how would you propose that question to be explored?
Well, I would love for this to go, to be discussed first among us to find out what you guys think. And personally, I, I do think it's something that council should also look at. So if that's the only way is to vote and put it as a conditional-
Okay, because when you had brought that up, I started thinking about it from that perspective because I hadn't before. And when I looked at the studies, I, I had some questions. But what I had seen there, that item, based on how you explored it and explained it, I didn't see a remedy for it. So I'm with you, I support your question in terms of, well, how does this work? So you have someone else on your side to explore that perspective. But that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So I'm happy to hear what everyone else has to say in regards because we'll probably have to vote on that.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I can go. So I, sort of looking at this holistically, I, I, I know this all sort of came to fruition after I'd left council, but I know we were really excited about, you know, the precise plan that we put in place and the, the potential for these master plans to come through, which would assemble a number of parcels and be able to provide the neighborhood a lot of the, I think, the key elements that we'd hope would come to fruition with the precise plan in specific areas instead of it all happening piecemeal over some number of- some number of decades through different property owners and, and different concepts that might not be fully planned out in advance like you would get with a, with a master planning process. And so when I, so I'll just focus on what my initial high-level concerns were and how they were addressed and where my concerns lie today. I think most of my initial concerns, you know, from a year, a year or so ago, well, actually, two years ago, were, have been allayed somewhat. I was very concerned about the 20-year DA, just because, you know, that's really not, I wouldn't say standard, it's just something we haven't done before. And, and, and part of that is that we just haven't had something with an assemblage this large with all the elements. And so what I'm, what I'm pleased with is, is the work that's been done to adjust the phasing. So that was the other sort of big concern that I had as part of a 20-year DA was that if you phase this in such a way, or in a, in a suboptimal way, you end up with certain elements that may or may not get, get built. And so one of the things that we really wanted to make sure that we add, or at least one of the things that is important to me, is to get some of the housing and the community benefits upfront, some of the, the open space, the, the green space, the connectivity, the, the affordable housing and the, and market rate housing as well, especially in that area, as we've seen, we've approved some other projects that are currently sitting on the shelf and may not happen. And so this is, I think, another opportunity to start to move those things forward in a way that is compliant with the precise plan and meets a lot of, a lot of those goals. So I think my, my general concerns about the, the long length of the DA have mostly been addressed. My bigger concerns with the phasing have mostly been addressed by what's been proposed. I, I always go back and forth between inclusionary units and land because, you know, they both have their, their benefits and drawbacks. And it really comes down to, I think, the, the, the site, the context, and all the things around it as to whether or not the land is, is more valuable than, than the inclusionary units. And I think in this case, you know, we, the, I think the, the city very deliberately wrote in, you know, the alternative mitigations or the alternative of land dedication, as long as it can provide, you know, an equal or greater benefit to the inclusionary. And I think in this particular market environment and the long length of this DA, having the certainty of having that land dedicated upfront provides a pretty, you know, decent value to the city and, as opposed to the inclusionary units, just because we, as the city, will have the ability to, to, you know, move on that site whenever we feel it's most appropriate. And I think, and we have the ability to select the unit mix, we have the ability to partner with a developer that we, we want and design it the way that we want, and it may take a long time. And it may cost a lot of money, but we, we have the ability to select, you know, where we get the funding from, how much we put in, how we design that site and, and how it all fits together. So those are, those are, the phasing, the DA, and ultimately, the, the layout of the, the different spaces, which I know there were initial concerns about a couple of years ago in some of the study sessions. I think all those have been addressed, and it, it looks like a, a site that, or an overall plan that really fits. My hope is that it all, obviously, I'd like it all to come to fruition, but in terms of phasing, getting the housing upfront, phase two, which includes some other community benefits, is a big chunk of the office, which I think is a good incentive for, for this to get built, because office will, will have some value there. And then that the remainder of that office is in phase four, so that provides some encouragement for phase three or occur two. So I think overall, it generally, it's come together quite well. You know, I still have some concerns about the, the DA, obviously, and hoping that this all comes to fruition and that we don't get stuck partway through. But I, I think it will be hard to find another plan that's been put together and a, a consortium or a, or a team behind this with Lend Lease and Google that, that can pull this off, frankly. They're not the only one, but they're one of the few. So overall, I have a lot of confidence in, in this master plan concept and the way that it's come together. I think, for me, the other part of being an EPC member is, I, you know, I always pay attention to any, the EIR and any, you know, statements of overriding considerations and, and things like that, because that is really important for us to look at. And, and the key here is looking at what caused this. Why is it being caused? And, and do the benefits outweigh the, the cost? And, and I think it's been touched upon earlier, especially in the questions. You know, we're really looking at the, you know, the, the, the log project and the combination of things and the barrier quality management districts rules where we're, we're sort of looking at a cumulative impact. And I think the mitigations associated with those that have been identified should, should at least give me some solace. And, and I believe ultimately that those can be appropriately mitigated, maybe not to the point of not triggering overriding considerations, but I feel comfortable recommending that we, we do that in this particular case. So overall, the ground floor re, the ground floor commercial space, I understand the concern, but I, you know, I work for a small company, are, are one of our floor plate, like, one level is 24,000 square feet. That's really not a lot of office in the grand scheme of things. It's, it's, you know, I, I look, parking back to walking the space today. And it, it's just, if we were talking about 100,000 square feet or something like that, then I would be much more concerned. But I, I don't necessarily share the same concern about, you know, 20,000 to 25,000 square feet of, of commercial space, especially on the, on the ground floor, where that's likely going to be broken up and, and the, the uses for those are probably going to be pretty small. And it will be good to have not just, it'll be great to have retail and neighborhood serving services, but some of those services can also be commercial in nature as well. And so I think, I think overall, what's proposed works quite well. I'm not sure, you know, if, if we want to, to flag it as something for, for council to consider. I think that's fine. I'm not sure, like, saying that it should be housing instead is the right, is the right approach. Maybe it could be something else, but I, I just don't. I guess the bottom line is I'm just not that worried about that, that amount of square footage. If it were three times, that I'd be much more worried. So in any event, I'm prepared to support the staff recommendation when folks are ready. I don't, there's, there's nothing in my mind that, that requires, you know, a significant change or deviation from, from what's been put together after numerous community meetings and, and study sessions between both EPC and council. I'll stop talking.
Thank you. Commissioner Gutierrez, Vice Chair Yan, your, your hands left up from before? Your hands have been up the whole time. Are you still?
Sorry, yeah. Commissioner Gutierrez had raised his hand first, and he asked me a question, so I answered it, but I didn't take my turn. I guess.
Okay.
But he had already started that. I was just going to say that, you know, we didn't talk about it. Obviously, Google and Lend Lease have done a lot of work, and if I were to sing the praises of this master plan, we'd be here all night. So I think they're very aware of all the, the positives, and it's testament to all their community outreach, and staff has worked very hard on this. It's, it's testament to all that work and also the community activists that everyone is supporting this in general. So what we're discussing now is just brass tacks, because I, I really, you know, take this job seriously. We're here to, as the voice of the, the city, the community, and I do want to ensure that the win-win is truly a win for Mountain View. And I, I know that Commissioner Clark wasn't worried about, you know, the 20, I forgot, 26, 24,000 square feet. But if we're looking at jobs-housing linkage, it doesn't matter how small it is. If it's general office, we should be getting like almost, you know, 75 more affordable units. I'm not saying, you know, I, I don't want any other kind of use there other than neighborhood serving and retail. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, if in the case that we're getting general office, should we not be looking at applying the jobs-housing linkage to that general office as well? So that's really the point of that conversation. And then the only point I have in addition to that is the, is back to like my first question to staff about asking the affordable housing people what their thoughts were on developing out the affordable housing units. And I am very appreciative that Chair Cranston had gone ahead and took another step and actually personally asked someone. So, but irrespective of the cost, the inflation and all that, because it seems like the consultant did consult affordable housing developers, is whether or not the alternative mitigation is equal or greater in value to actually getting what the city stated, which is the inclusive units. Now, I understand that the inclusive units are not feasible, so when we look at that alternative mitigation, we're looking at, you know, what it is as being appropriate. Pardon me. So if the job housing linkage is the number of units per thousand square feet, we're aiming for 380. It doesn't say what kind of units, unfortunately. If Michaela had said the demand is for two and three bedrooms, but the affordable housing developers are saying, if we look at two and three bedrooms, we are not going to get the 380, then are we getting equal or greater value? If inclusive units are not doable, then what else can we be gaining as a city in order to get the 380 units that the jobs-housing linkage states we need? You see what I mean? I'm not sure. It was a whole long sentence paragraph there, but the main point is we need to get 380 units. That's what the jobs-housing linkage says for affordable housing. If the demand is two and three bedrooms, why are we not getting 380 with a mix of the appropriate two and three-bedroom units? Why are we settling for a bunch of studios and less than what the precise plan says? At least for, that's, that's market rate. Maybe that's a different conversation, but in general, that's the mix the city wants. So why are we not asking for that? And can we get that on these two sites? 380 units of what is in demand? That's all.
Then any?
Lower my hand. Yeah, I mean, things I like about this, I like the labor union. I like transforming, you know, like non-optimized parcels of land to arguably something better. Like the park amenities. That works for me. I guess it's not a, it wouldn't be hard for anyone to guess that my biggest concern with all of this is the alternative mitigation. From multiple or a few angles, number one being, I, I, I just want to be clear, I think was someone from Silicon Valley at home might have mentioned, you know, we're getting like 20% or something like that, and, and it'd be great to support because of that. I, like, I want to be clear, we're not getting 20% units. We're getting land. We're getting land with the potential, the potential for that to become 20% inclusionary. And the thing I think about is, what is the value of that land? And, and, and to whom is that value corresponding to with regards to the choices that we as a body, and then the city council goes on to make? Because land has multiple ways of being valuable, right? You can use it for agriculture. You can hold it as an asset, or you can use it for housing. And if our purpose is to find ways to tend to the general welfare and well-being of the people in our community, and if the most urgent need of our people and residents is the creation of more housing, in particular, more affordable housing, in particular, affordable housing that can house families in two or three-bedroom units, and we're talking about potentially holding on to that and maybe developing it when we have more sunny economic conditions? I'm, I'm, I'm not really in agreement with that. You know, maybe I'm around the wrong kind of developers, but one of the word, what the, the top word that I've heard the most around the developers I've been around is risk, 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 risk. Sorry, Seeful Consultant, you hear me saying risk again, I'm sorry, but it's, it's, it's a lot of risk in good times to be in the development business. And right now, what I'm hearing we're going to get is land and labor costs associated with all of the planning and procurement, the RFP, we have stretched out staff already. And the affordable developer themselves have risks that we're not even aware of. And so right now, what I'm hearing is, and what I'm feeling and seeing is, there's maybe three options. One is, we go with the alternative mitigation and we go with what the applicant is proposing. And maybe in the future, I honestly, if, if by the time phase one or phase two are done and we don't have those units, I, I think that's a failure, if not by phase one. I'm honestly worried that we will just say, yeah, let's do alternative mitigation. And at the end of this, you know, 10 years down the line, 15 years down the line, honestly, hopefully, not 20 years from now, that there's no units there, no affordable units, or something subpar. Maybe we even had to sell the land because we actually couldn't find a way to develop it. Maybe we had to settle for less than the 380 units because that's all that we could do, given all the conditions and circumstances at that time. And so that's something that, in terms of understanding what's the likelihood of that happening, I'm not saying those are the most likely outcomes, but we don't know what the potential likelihood of that happening is. We don't have that risk assessment in front of us to say, hey, here's the alternative mitigation, and here's what could happen if you do accept it. It's all about the potential value. I love potential value. What's going to be a barrier for us to be able to access that? Furthermore, I'm really hoping that in terms of a, almost like alternative to the alternative, what some might call a counterproposal, not necessarily to the applicant, but to the city decision-makers, to the EPC, to the council. Hey, here's their alternative mitigation. Here's another alternative that could work. Maybe it's them doing the inclusionary at the 15%. And because we weigh what the risk is of this outcome versus this more certain outcome, maybe we get less units. But this one is more guaranteed. If Google is a titan of economy and Lend Lease is the developer of the Sydney Opera House and the Petronas Towers in Malaysia, they know what they're doing. Right? I don't understand why it would be a pain for them to develop less affordable units in an inclusionary manner, because the truth is, we already have, you know, I, I heard Commissioner Clark say, hey, you know, we could decide whatever we want to do with, with these units in this like dedicated parcel. The truth is, as a city, we've already had and made many decisions in the past around what we want our city to look like, and that's why those regulations are already there. This is an alternative mitigation to the decisions that have already been put in place by the governing councils that have come before us. And so there's no reason why we can't just say, hey, let's actually go with that. But the truth is, I don't feel like I have enough information to actually be able to assess whether or not how to balance that risk. Um, so on 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 that front, I feel like I'm flying blind. I'll say for personally, I would say, I think as a body, we're flying blind. Everyone can disagree with me if they want. Um, but that's something that I'm I'm really upset about. And it's it and I don't know that it's necessarily on the applicant. Which is, yeah. But that that's my thinking. Um, as far as the retail goes, I'm very much, um, you know, appreciative of Commissioner Ian's critical eye around the office space and whether or not that necessarily, whether or not that does have to apply. Um, the jobs linkage has jobs housing linkage has to apply to that. Good catch. Um, I I I I support that kind of critical review. But yeah, I I just don't know. So I'm only one of seven. I'm gonna stop talking. Um, and hear what others have to have to say.
Thank you. And I do want to say that one of the things I most appreciate about serving on the EPC is this dialogue and working alongside colleagues who are so committed to the future Mountain View and I also know a lot of hours have gone into East Wisman Precise Plan, and I do echo Commissioner Clark's sentiment. I think this is getting closer to realizing the vision we want in in East Wisman and really linking office and residential development. And I think I'm the planning commissioner who lives the closest to this project and and the master plan, and I'm just really excited with the direction that it's going. And it's not a perfect project. I I really believe that this work is about trade-offs and and we have to wrestle with some of these things that aren't exactly ideal. I am comfortable with land dedication. I think, um, affordable housing financing is extremely complex and far exceeds my my knowledge and despite many hours I've spent trying to understand it. And so, um, I think that the flexibility it affords for us to, as a city, to be able to say, we have this land, we can work with an affordable housing developer, we can understand what the need is and where um, the funding landscape, what that looks like, because it is constantly changing and I I would really want to be informed and better understand where the affordable housing developer community is coming at and what they know and and where the city's funding ability lies, because I think that uncertainty gives me a lot of pause, but I think, um, the opportunity to build out this vision and have two parcels dedicated for affordable housing to be developed in a way that we see fit and can advise down the road, um, that ameliorates my concerns. Um, a couple of things that haven't come up tonight, and I I did just want to flag, we haven't talked as much about mo- mobility through the project, and I I do think that there and there's some concerns raised about the traffic congestion around one oh one in Ellis that just cannot be addressed, given a host of reasons. And I think, um, a lot of this project hinges on VTA, right, and getting more people to use this highly underutilized station at the moment. And so I I just want to be careful that we're going into this knowing that a lot of this depends on getting more people in public transit and VTA is a critical partner in that and and really getting people to to want to live a car light um, kind of lifestyle in this in this new area that we're building. And then the last thing that I'll say, related to the broader and East Wisman Precise Plan, there's there's a hope, right, to um, develop the village centers on um, Middlefield and Wisman, and I would encourage the applicant to think about in their business program, where is their opportunity really for staging? So as as that area maybe gets redeveloped, are there opportunities to think about some of the local neighborhood serving businesses that exist in this area and allow them, you know, write a first refusal or or give them the first kind of offer to be considered for some of the the ground floor retail and space that we've been talking about? So, um, like Commissioner Clark, I I will plan to support this project, but I I want to hear from others about how we can make it better.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess I should comment on kind of the two, the 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 two big points of discussion tonight. Very simply, I would say that I I I I'm curious about the issue that Vice Chair Yan raised. Um, and I would, uh, I would welcome either now or later staff going back and kind of reexamining whether that calculation was done fully correctly because of his office space. It didn't get counted, and perhaps I didn't catch the issue well enough. I didn't um, I didn't catch it the first time, so maybe I'm just confused about it, but if that if that odd that fifty thousand we were talking about, if some part of that wasn't counted in the linkage, I'd like to know why. So anyway, I would support sort of a reexamination and maybe a reexplanation of how that how that was done. On the question of the alternative mitigation, I think consistency matters. So two year, year and a half ago, I guess it was, uh, I was very much in support of the idea of us going the route of taking the land because it it appeared to let us have more units in total. And at the time, we were big fans of as much as we could get, let's do it. Um, and this, as I understood it, got us more units going with the the land thing. I understand the the fear that comes with, you know, a looming recession. I totally get it. I get it too. I don't I don't I don't get the impression that there's a lot of certainty in building huge buildings like this. But as long as staff can look us all in the eye and say that they feel, you know, that it's built into, it's going to get built into the budget. And this is the kind of thing that's been done before. It's not an outrageous outlay of money that we the city of Mountain View has never done before. I mean, if they could look at us and tell us, yeah, okay, no, this is doable. This isn't crazy. This is something that we can do. That's I value that. I value that. I value staff's support of the concept. I value very much the community support of the concept. You know, we heard from uh, we heard from carpenters and and uh, sustainable, like, uh, we've got that long entry list of folks that showed up to say there's so many things that we like about this project and and I didn't hear a lot of um, fear about doing the land dedication. It is more work, for sure. And it is more risk on the city, for sure. And and again, I'm going to be looking at this because I don't build buildings. I'm going to be looking to city staff to tell us, you know, in certain terms, that this is not an unduly risky proposal. And I mean that, like, I really would like to hear at some point, just so that I can sleep at night, tell me, this is not an unduly risky thing to do. Um, but from all of the evidence I've seen, it is not. And that's good enough for me to stick with my, you know, what I voted on a year and a half ago and say, I am okay going forward with this project and with the alternative mitigation. Yeah, I may have a couple more comments at the end, uh, because I didn't get to talk about all the stuff I love about this project. Um, but I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, I haven't been a former member of the Mount Meow Wisman School Board. I can tell you, negotiating with Google is tough. And more often than not, we got jack shit. That's as simple as that. I'm sorry. Truth be told, man. It it's it's a long drawn out process. I can't tell you how many times you promised the school site. That went out the door in all my five years there and then two years since then. Now the conversation steered towards them directly discussing this issue with the city for credits. That's how it goes. So to have something like this, go through this process for a number of years and then come back with an actual proposal and an intent to develop is needless to me. And I appreciate that because we had various community inputs in general, not just from the city of Mountain View, but among our member, uh, fellow citizens, which is wonderful. So, uh, we're not adverse to risk. I wasn't, uh, part of a board that was cautious, but nor were we reckless. So I know I can ask a question and I can ask something of a question to Eric or perhaps even Sandy Lee, if she's, I think she's still here. When I went through some of these sessions with Google and negotiating and tactics and also just negotiating good faith, for the most part, sometimes we wouldn't have a risk assessment depending on the subject matter. But here now that we're dealing with this land mass and land transfer development and potential development for affordable housing, is is it is it customary to have a risk assessment also associated to the potentiality of this working or not? In such a project, Eric, is this how it works through the city or is that something that comes later on or does that even come into play?
Uh, thanks for the question, Commissioner. Um, you know, I'll I'll say that we're we're walking new ground in a lot of ways for this project. I know we've done some discussion around site dedication for other other projects in the past. Um, maybe I'll tee this up to Lindsay and see kind of as as you were evaluating this uh, site dedication process, um, what what have you, you know, what what other experience, whether it's in in Mountain View or other cities, um, you know, we work with a lot of consultants that work with a lot of other cities. And and how has that kind of informed the process and this question of risk assessment? How has it come up in the discussion for this project?
Yeah, so I think a couple of things. We've had one, uh, project dedicate land in North Bayshore. That was in Sabrato Project. Um, there was no kind of analysis like what we've done for this project for that one. So this really is, quite honestly, the first time we've done an analysis of a land proposal like this, where we've looked at not just sort of all of the numerical information that we can, but also look at what could potentially be developed here and what kind of cost, um, does that come at? So, um, you know, this is really a new territory for us. Um, and I think we've learned a lot from the city staff side of really um, how we could potentially, you know, modify our programs or other requirements to sort of address uh, some of these things we've learned along the way. In terms specifically to some kind of risk assessment, um, you know, I can't say that we've done uh, what would be classified as a risk assessment. But I think what has been talked about here tonight, I think a lot of the work we're doing is assessing a private proposal and what does it mean to deliver something on that land. Um, we're definitely not the only city. We've talked to other cities that have done land dedication. San Jose is a good example. They've done quite a few land dedication projects. Um, and so we've talked to them, uh, in this process and and, uh, I think a lot of us are all in the same boat in terms of trying to figure out what these mean, I think. And really what we've produced as part of this staff report and worked with consultant team on um, is really our best best efforts to date on trying to figure this out. Um, you know, I'll say openly and honestly, I can't say this may not be perfect, but I think it's it's really our best guess and approach to try to assess this. Um, and I think we're open as city staff to how we might be able to do, uh, different analysis in the future or how we could consider different things in the future as well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Lindsay. That helps out a lot because I think this is a girl, uh, um, a movement and progress, right? And we're heading towards whatever we spoke about years past, whether I was on the school board or now with the EPC, it's all about the partnerships. You 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 may sometimes ruffle some feathers, you sometimes you don't, but you get to an endpoint that's a win-win for everyone as best as you can, as soon as you can, outweighing all the pros and cons. And right now, based on what I see from Google and what they've proposed, I can't see any fault to what they've suggested in doing. So I'll be supporting this. That's not an issue. I think the question now is, can we believe in our process to move forward? Can we believe in the city council and make the right choices after us? I think the answer is yes. Thank you.
So, uh, Vice Chair Yan, I haven't had a chance to train with you. Is it would be okay if I spoke for a moment? So, um, I had the, I I at the last meeting, I suggested all of you go back and listen to the the study session that Michaela alluded to about the the council asked for on affordable housing. And I heard seven voices very committed to finding ways to get affordable housing in this city. I didn't hear, oh, we're going to put this off to some future point in time. It was staff, figure out how do we do this and and keep it moving. I also heard that based on the precise plan or the the housing element and the things that have been brought forward, that we have the wonderful problem of potentially having more land owned by the city than than we've ever had before. So how do we go get the money to be able to do these kinds of things? So that's that's a great news. I mean, Artie, I I know she's on the, she's been on the attendee list here all day, and she's actually listening. Either her and her team, Michaela, did a great job in that session, and they did lay out a plan on how, you know, what do we need to do? There is no certainty. Well, one thing, my the first definitions I got of management was making decisions without with incomplete information. So Commissioner New Year's, welcome to the EPC, okay? We're not going to have all the answers. Um, that's what we have to deal with, quite frankly. I look at this and say, you know what? Google and Len Lease have listened. They made some changes. Would I love this to be like Commissioner Clark, a six-year, seven-year, you know, uh, development agreement and get it all done that time? Absolutely. Um, but this is, I quite frankly, I look at this and anything's been proposed in North Bayshore, I have far more confidence that this will happen than anything in North Bayshore, quite frankly. This to me, looks like it's, it has a lot of great potential. And I think Krishna Clark made the comment earlier that things that were submitted before have fallen by the wayside. Well, guess what? We all saw it approved and council approved a development on Middlefield. It's across the street from this. And guess what? It went before the DRC this week. It's back. Four hundred and fifty more units across the street from this, okay? Loge has been approved. There's another project that's proposed right next to it. The potentials here for not only this, but another, you know, thousand plus units all in this area. So to Chair Vice Chair Yan's concern about retail, I think we, I would love to see a way of encouraging Len Lease to do this to to make sure that that space does become retail, because you're going to have potentially before you even finish, you're going to have it in place. The one thing that I did mention when I talked to my to my affordable housing friend was, you know, what do you think of getting land? And his answer was, land is a really good thing. So it was the fact that we are getting the land, it I didn't hear, I'm I'm not going to go try to figure out how to get the money. It's like, if you have land, I could, you know, I'll I'll try to figure something out. So I I I I I understand the need is the value of potential risk assessment. That's actually a financial risk, okay? If I'm going to get loan money from a bank, are you going to pay my bills? Are you gonna, are you gonna, are you gonna make money for me? Well, that same kind of assessment doesn't happen as much in in the nonprofit world. And so I think, you know, as the landowner, we're going to have the ability to go do that and and pick a developer, put it out there and look for a proposal, just like we did with Lot Twelve, um, to be able to find something and make it work. So when it comes to the mix, Vice Chair Yan, we could say, I want the entire space to be one bedroom units or singles, and we'd probably get more than three hundred eighty. We could probably make decisions, say, I want everything to be three bedroom units, and we would never come come close to three eighty, but you know what? It'll be our choice. Because we own the land. I do think that the that, you know, the stat, the challenge that Michaela and and Wayne and Artie, you know, worked on to figure out, I think they may be, you know, they're going to have to look sharp in the pencil even more because, uh, you know, I'm I'm, it's going to take a while if we get all these big projects, but I think what Google's done is is a, it's a step in the right direction. It's not perfect. I I think it's, uh, it's the the transformation that we all hope for in in the Swissman is starting. You know, hopefully it's not, it's done before, what I said earlier, twenty forty-two. Hopefully, I'm still kicking in twenty forty-two, uh, but I think this is the step in the right direction. So I'm going to be supporting it. Uh, yeah, it's not perfect. Um, but I think it's a I I think it's it's a project worth supporting and will will be recommending to to council that we move it ahead. So, uh, that's my view. Vice Chair Yan.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I think I was one of the few commissioners who, very early on, really, really pushed for inclusionary and we didn't have enough information at the time. Now that we've got a little bit more information, um, and not only is Google saying it's not feasible economically to do inclusionary, all inclusionary, and the consultant is saying it and staff agrees with the consultant, I'm happy to put aside the inclusionary. I do see benefits, a lot of benefits to the alternative mitigation of having the land. So that is a plus. That goes into, is this alternative mitigation equal or greater? There's something to put in the column that says, yes, this is something we can consider. What I am, I guess, if I if I get want to get really specific, the question would be then, is the land dedication, is that enough land to do the required number of units? And what mixes that? It is great. We get to choose, but the what we're choosing is limited to what that land can provide. If we know the demand is two, three bedroom units, and that's where the money is, that's where the demand is, as Michaela had said, then how many units can we get? that's where the demand is, as Michaela had said, then how many units can we get? They're already saying it's going to be under the required. So is this then equal? Is this land dedication equal or greater? So my question is, did we go to the affordable housing developers and say, hey, this is the demand, this is what is going to get us our financing? We need two, three bedrooms. We are required to get three eighty. Does this pass muster? And that question has not been answered for me personally. I don't know. It doesn't seem like it, given the information we've gotten. We're not going to get the three hundred and eighty if we want two, three bedrooms. And all these other projects were saying, yeah, we really think families should live here. I think families should live here, too. As great as this project is and this master plan, a lot of work has gone into it. But if we don't make this decision now, we're not going to have anything to discuss and negotiate. So now is the time to negotiate it. So I think council should really, I'm all for supporting the overall plan, certainly, definitely. And honestly, I wouldn't even be looking at this, you know, we got the information on Friday. I just now looked at it. So I'm sorry, Jeff. You know, when we had had the online thing, I didn't have the information before me and I didn't, I don't want to, you know, feel like I'm sidetracking people or what is the term? Just, you know what I'm talking about. Anyways, so the main point is, does the land dedication provide for what is required and what is in demand, given what we know? Let's ask the affordable developers. So if in the meantime, I'm willing to vote yes, a big yes, if I know that we're getting what is at least required. The land dedication does offer some benefits. But are we getting what's required first? Are those land, are those benefits with the land dedication going to surpass taking a cut of the number of units? And how many units are we going to have to cut? That's the question. And I don't have, I don't feel confident that I have the answer to say I am a hundred percent on board with being able to choose that we take all studios so that we can get our required number of affordable housing units. I think it should be, we should get some more information. Or city council should have that information in front of them before they vote. I would make that a condition.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, so just to address that, I totally understand the concern. But I think the analysis that was done, we don't have to have all studios get three eighty. I think staff is typically very methodical when it comes to determining whether a benefit outweighs, you know, what would normally be standard. And we have a consultant we hired telling us that, you know, it's reasonably equivalent or beyond. We have staff telling us that they're comfortable with that analysis. And my understanding is this analysis was done on studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms to look at, you know, where we're getting at. I could be wrong and someone can correct me if I am. But the other piece of this is that our requirements aren't as set in stone as provide us this number of units based on what today's market demand is because market demand shifts. You know, it could be by the time that we get this land and we identify an affordable housing developer who will work with us on it, the demand could be four bedrooms. And so I don't think that, I mean, there's a reason why there's no sentence in the precise plan or the, or, you know, in the requirements around this that says, well, it has to match whatever the current market demand is. Because then also, who are you asking what the demand is? It really, there's demand for affordable housing in every category. And so it really comes down to a matter of a judgment call of one, you know, are we comfortable with the analysis that was done to provide equivalency or more here? And if not, then what's the alternative? I'm not sure, like, telling everyone to go start from scratch and find X number of additional square feet for affordable housing in land dedication is the right way to proceed. So that's the other way that I analyze this is, let's say I, let's say that I'm convinced that we need a whole bunch of three bedrooms and we need enough land and space for nothing but two and three bedrooms. That's going to require a lot of additional land. And I don't think it's fair to have gotten this far along in the process where we've sort of been saying, yes, we're on the right path at every stage. And then at the last minute, say, well, we need two and three bedrooms. So go find a bunch of additional land to dedicate to us. And by the way, that changes the entire economics of the project, shifts things around and does all that. So if the question is, you know, can we clarify for council between now and their meeting, sort of what the assumptions were for the different analyses so that they have that information and they can decide, you know, whether they feel this is equivalent or better with additional information? I'm totally on board with that. I just don't want to, I'm just not on board with making, you know, adding a condition specifically to the overall project that says that, you know, they have to find three hundred and eighty, you know, three-bedroom units. If council decides that, they can, but I think that's their purview. And then the other thing that I wanted to say is, I wanted to thank Vice Chair for clarifying in my complete misunderstanding of the twenty-four thousand square feet and what you were getting at. Now, I think I get it now in terms of the calculation and in terms of the job housing linkage. And I just wanted to give staff an opportunity maybe to explain if they can or maybe this is for another day. But, you know, whether we could, whether the precise plan even says that that, you know, the square footage of that nature, whether it's in the precise plan or the master plan, would be required to be part of the job housing linkage or if there's some exemption there that you relied on to where it would basically be changing the rules of the game on them to include that.
Yeah, so the way that the job housing linkage program is structured, it's really meant to serve and be related to, you know, a true office building that's constructed and that will always, you know, be designed and used as an office building. I think the struggle with, I think what Commissioner Yen is getting at is commercial tenant space is not a constant use. It can always change over time. So it's hard to assume that it will always be office if it did get an office tenant. And so I think the way that this program was set up, it was not intended to cover any of the neighborhood commercials serving kind of commercial ground floor spaces because those spaces could really change over time. So that's how the program was sort of structured.
Okay, I understand now. So yeah, the concern would be, you know, if all of those morph into, you know, general, you know, more office-like environments, then we're probably not quite getting the job housing linkage that we should have. But in general, like, ground floor commercial spaces put up on of those sizes typically don't support long-term like offices, I guess, is what I'm hearing. So, okay, well, that helps me at least. I'm not sure about others. But I would be, you know, just to throw out an idea, I mean, if others want to to ask staff, you know, between now and the council meeting, if we can get more information about the inputs that were garnered for the, or developed or assumed as part of the analyses that, you know, maybe Google and Len lease did and what our consultants did and especially assumptions around bedroom count, and then be able to say to council like, hey, like, you know, we're supposed to get the equivalent of three hundred and eighty units. Here's the configurations that looks like, you know, if they're all, if you want mostly two and three bedrooms, it's going to be a lesser unit count. If it's, you know, studios, one bedrooms and maybe some two bedrooms, then you can get to three eighty. And then sort of let them decide, give them more information basically about what they're making a decision on in terms of equivalency or better. But I don't know if that would satisfy votes or not, but I'll let others decide.
Commissioner Yen?
I guess, I actually do appreciate Commissioner Clark's last kind of comment around some transparency around the unit mixture. I mean, if we just think about the last developer asking for concessions, they were asking for concessions to, right, like, have more studios and one bedrooms. And to be quite honest, like, if accepting this alternative mitigation is going to result in a mixture of housing stock units that are inadequately meeting the need of the people who demand affordable housing the most, which I think after going through our housing element procedures, I mean, it's clear it's families, working families needing these units. Then at least we ought to be transparent about saying, hey, we're going to have this many studios for this many working families. At the very least, we should be transparent about that. Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with accepting Commissioner Clark's transparency proposal around the configuration type. But I also don't have a problem with Commissioner Yen's suggested requirement either. Because as much as, like, you know, Chair Crenson, I appreciate your paraphrasing of my position, I'm not seeking, you know, like, a hundred percent understanding of everything that could theoretically and practically go wrong. You know, I appreciate that you've done management and I have my own line of profession. And doing an assessment of what could go wrong with your project is not trying to, you know, understand everything. It's called due diligence. And I appreciate very much that Lindsay mentioned, you know, hey, this is a new thing that we're trying. And we were consulting with other people, other cities in our region. And we're doing our best. To me, that sounds like due diligence. It doesn't mean that there's no room for iteration. Doesn't mean there's no room for improvement of a process and incorporation of learnings. I'm quite honestly very comforted by that because that's what we need. Because as land gets more scarce, as costs go up, we're going to have to find more and new innovative and creative ways to do this. And so I will always be appreciative of an increasing trend towards sound and proper due diligence of what we have on the table, what would happen if we did nothing, and what other alternatives are. And that's just good practice. So that's where I stand. I could go with Commissioner Clark's position. And I also have absolutely no issue at all supporting the requirement as proposed by Commissioner Yen.
Vice Chair Yen? Are you around me?
Thanks. I wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Clark for supporting the question to staff, which is, can we get more information? Because my point is, I think from what we know, they've already said, we know the demand is this now. I mean, we're doing all the financials based on now because that's all we can do, right? And we understand that. So why can't we understand that this is the demand now? So we know what we're looking for. No project is perfect. I completely get that, too. I'm not looking for perfect. I'm just looking to get the requirement, if we can. And if the land dedication, and we asked the affordable housing developers, can this land support what we're aiming to get? And if the answer is no, we need to know that. City council needs to know that if they're going to vote on whether or not this is an alternative mitigation of getting equal or greater value. So I am very happy and I would be totally willing, if most people want to go that direction, to say, yes, let's get that information before council so council can make that decision and say to everybody, we're only going to get, you know, potentially the three hundred and twenty-eight units at one bedrooms and two bedrooms and studios. If we want, you know, what the precise plan requires or asks for, which we're not getting, if we want to get the right proportion, then we're going to only get two hundred and ninety-eight units. And this is what we're voting on. But I think it would be helpful to know these things because I don't feel comfortable voting fully, wholeheartedly yes on what we have now. So I would be in support of that. And back to the retail portion, yeah, with all those people, I agree, definitely. If we can get all fifty thousand square feet for neighborhood-serving stuff, all for it. But because their program only looks at the twenty-one and then there's the five required by the city that does leave twenty-four thousand. And I don't want to be cynical, but I'm learning that it's necessary sometimes, that sometimes things happen. And I know, again, it's not perfect, but that's a lot of affordable units. We're already struggling right now to get the required. Why am I, you know, why are we giving up almost seventy-five affordable units? If office goes in, we know office goes in quite readily over neighborhood retail. That's, everybody has said that. You guys have said that. Everybody knows that is just the case. So for the, for that portion that is not in the program, if it is not neighborhood retail, which I'm hoping we get, but I understand it can't always be what I want and it goes to general office, we're losing out on a lot of affordable housing there also. So I just want to have plan C in place, let's say, in case that does happen. Or can we talk about it with Google? At least put that out there. Let's have a discussion. So those are the things I'm aiming for. If everyone is in agreement, that that sounds reasonable. Thanks.
Chair Crenston, can I follow up?
Yeah, because I have a question on that myself.
So I wanted to just clarify a couple of things. So the requirement for affordable housing is based on the fifteen percent of units. So the alternative mitigation for more has to be more than fifteen percent. So what was assessed in the report produced what would essentially be a number that's around seventeen percent with that three hundred and thirty-eight units? So it would be producing more units than what would minimally be required at the fifteen percent? The other thing I wanted to clarify is that the assumptions that Cyphal Consulting used in sort of modeling what could be developed on the site was assuming family mix. So it does assume more to, you know, larger bedroom mix. So that three hundred and thirty-eight units really is translating into that family mix and the larger unit mix. I think what the applicant was proposing as part of their market rate units, that is leaning more towards the smaller studio or one-bedroom based on market trends for high-density residential near transit. But I just wanted to clarify that that's kind of what the basis of that Cyphal Consulting report was really assuming. So, yeah.
Thank you, Lindsay. It would be great if the table was there for, you know, what is the mix they're assuming? How many units? And what is the demand? What we're looking at? And then you can have, like, comparing apples to apples and have the council make a decision that way. Because I think it's less clear without it. Thank you.
All right, I guess I would agree with that. So what you said, Lindsay, is what I had read was that the survey report says that the proposal actually does meet requirements of the precise plan for the alternative mitigation. The precise plan, the precise plan does not require three hundred and eighty units, actually lower than the three hundred and thirty-eight. The three hundred and thirty-eight that Cyphal calculated would in fact be more than what's required for the alternative mitigation. But it just doesn't have to be as high as Google and Lee's calculation of what it could be, correct?
Yeah, so the fifteen percent is based on the city's BMR requirements, not the precise plan requirements. So that assessment was based on those BMR requirements. And it does produce more based on what Cyphal came back with.
And then second question. The retail space is only in buildings one and two, R1 and R2. It's not in office buildings. Is that correct?
Correct. All of the ground floor commercial active-use space are in residential buildings. There's one exception for the P2 parking structure. There's some ground floor retail shown.
The retail space is not in buildings that can be added or appended to office buildings. It's in spaces that have no other office space in those structures, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just, it sounded like we were, I was worried that what Vice Chair Yen was suggesting was that things that were going to be in office buildings could become part of office buildings, but it's actually in the residential buildings of this space, of course. Okay. Krishna Clark?
Yeah, on that note, I think that makes it, I think that fact, like, I was speaking to her, where makes me feel like the risk there is pretty low. But Vice Chair Yen's right, like, anything can happen over time and we're talking about long time periods. So I guess, and I guess Lindsay just And I guess Lindsay, just to clarify, like. Maybe this isn't like truly written out somewhere, or maybe it is, but, but asking. Placing additional restrictions on that ground floor commercial space in those particular buildings, but. Essentially, that would be something that should be done through an amendment of the. Precise plan, right, it's, it's not something that we could just sort of require on the spot if I were guessing, but maybe, maybe it is, right?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, the precise plan allows these uses, so yeah, I think, um.
Yeah.
You know, what, what maybe a suggestion I would have is that, you know, I can definitely talk to the applicant, uh, prior to going to council and seeing if they. Uh, if there may be any interest to put any parameters around it, but, um, ultimately what's allowed in the precise plan is something that would be allowed in the master plan.
Got it, so, um, if, if folks are amenable, um, let me, let me do this, I'll, I'll go ahead and move this staff recommendation with, um. Which is two points, um, the first being, um, yes, Lindsay, I think maybe in the section where. Um, you do talk about that, uh, in the staff report where you talk about the. The ground floor commercial in those residential buildings, maybe just having a sentence in there that, that clearly states that, you know, the. And, and that space wasn't subject to the, or isn't, you know, normally subject to. Um, the, uh, the jobs housing linkage calculation, just so if anyone has that same question, they under, that way it's, it's just there and they understand it. And, um, instead of having to, to go through the same discussion that we just had, um, to try and figure it out, and you know, if they're. If they decide as part of that, that they want to revisit the, the precise plan or the details of the precise plan later, they can, but at least they understand why. That wasn't included in the job housing linkage, um, and then the second piece would be, um. Adding to the section where you're talking about the, the, um. The alternative mitigation for affordable housing, just including a little bit more detail, like the, the tables that folks talked about of the, the unit mixes. And it doesn't just have to be the one unit mix that, um, our consultants did, but maybe, um, maybe just some examples of. If you do this mix, here's like the rough total that you would get to. Um, and then also. You probably already did, but just make it very clear, like, uh, Chair Cranston just did that, you know, the. The, uh, the fifteen percent amount is, is, is lower than, um, basically what's being proposed in, in either of those scenarios, um, if that's correct. That way they can, that way they can see, you know. Several years from now, if, if we do end up with a, um, with this parcel and we're, um, you know, you know, going out with an RFP for. Affordable housing developers, um, we know roughly sort of what we could be looking at in terms of unit mixes and unit count and all those things.
Mr. Yin, is that, are you seconding what he's putting out there?
Uh, yeah, I was going to say, uh, yeah, much appreciation for that. I, I do, I do second that, um, I would also please ask that then in presentations here forward that, um. There's no statement that we're providing, you know, twenty percent. Affordable housing, because I think that sometimes, I think I heard that somewhere and, um. I don't, I don't know where, maybe it's just been a long night, but that shouldn't be presented, that we're hitting certain numbers when. It's still in flux and we don't know. So. Maybe asking Google to amend. In addition would be nice, thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? And then I'll ask Christian to take a vote.
Yeah. Okay, um. So Commissioner Clark, uh. Uh, Commissioner Clark.
I, I do see Commissioner Haymeyer has her hand up before I vote, sorry.
Yeah, I'm happy to second, if, if that's where we are, if there's more discussion, I'd.
Oh. I think Vice Chair.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Dempsey?
I think you said, uh.
Yeah.
Bye.
Uh, Commissioner Geteros?
Aye.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yin?
Aye.
And Chair Cranston?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously.
Right, thank you, everyone. That we will. And Sandy, I'm, I'm assuming we're okay, we didn't have to read everything there, because we said we're, we're moving the staff report, right?
I think that's fine.
You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna call me on this when we don't do that. So, uh, item five is questions that reports updates requests and committee reports. Um, no actual be taken under these items at this time, um, so any announcements there?
Yeah, I'll go first, uh, just a few things, um, it was great to see everybody last week at the celebration of service, um. Much deserved for, uh, all the advisory bodies to counsel, but. Particular this body who works late on many weeks, uh, and, and has a lot of very difficult stuff to cover, so. Again, appreciated by all, um, to those of you who, uh, couldn't make it, um, certainly. Uh, you know, the, the whole city does appreciate of the work that you do. Um, on a sadder note, I'd like to announce that Stephanie Williams, our former zoning administrator, uh, planning manager has left city, she's. Uh, gone on to work for the city of Los Altos, so, um. For the time being, uh, Lindsay and I and Rebecca and Diana will step in variously to, uh. Each of our different roles, but we are looking for a replacement, um, as quickly as we can. Uh, update on city council, um, they approved the eight seventy El Comino Real project, which this body saw a few months ago. Uh, at this body's next meeting in early November, we are scheduled to review a one hundred percent affordable housing project. Uh, near the corner of Montecito and Shoreline, so we're forward to that. Uh, and then just an update about the housing element process, uh, we did, uh, you know, a few months ago, we submitted our draft to HCD. Uh, we did receive our comment letter back, uh, that comment letter is posted online, uh, we are. Meeting with HCD to address those comments and we're also meeting with different stakeholders. Uh, in order to tee up a full suite of options for, um. The final, uh, housing element, uh, for EPC and city council, uh, deliberation. Um, the EPC is still tentatively scheduled to review the housing element in mid-November.
Mr. Geteros?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that I had attended the recognition of service and along with Chair Cranston and. Vice Chair Yin and Chris Clark, so that was a very interesting and, uh. Nice evening out, and I wanted to thank the chair for, uh, doing the heavy lifting and presenting. What, uh, feats the EPC had done throughout the course of this last year.
That's all Eric's work. Thanks, Eric. Any other announcements? Okay, and so the date of the next meeting, there it is. So, uh, with that, we will adjourn the meeting at ten thirty-nine PM. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be November second, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, everyone. Ready?